Everyone, we are going to convene the regular meeting. You please stand with me and we'll do a silent invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, we've called this meeting to order. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have some proclamations. I'm going to read one here about Juneteenth. I don't, there's no one here to receive any proclamation, so I'll just read that. And then we'll have one for Parks and Recreation. So Juneteenth celebrates the end of slavery in the United States. It is also known as Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Juneteenth Independence Day, and Black Independence Day. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Texas to share the news that the Civil War had ended and all those enslaved were now free. Other than the Emancipation Proclamation came two and a half years earlier on January first, eighteen sixty-three. Union troops had previously been unable to enforce the order fully. As one of the oldest American holidays, Juneteenth commemorates formerly enslaved individuals and their descendants, and has historically been a time of prayer, reflection, and family reunification. This message also promotes the continued freedom and economic prosperity of all individuals from all races, colors, creeds, and cultures. Juneteenth also highlights the artistic and intellectual achievements and accomplishments of the African-American community. The city of Morgan Hill encourages its residents to promote knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture and become more aware of the significance of this celebration while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all people and cultures. In honor of inclusiveness and keeping with the goals of the city council, the city of Morgan Hill would like to recognize Juneteenth in Morgan Hill. Okay, you got a, okay, very good. Thank you, sir. I think Chris Gioni is going to receive this proclamation. This is Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and Recreation are an integral part of the communities promoting health and wellness to improve the physical and mental health of people who stay active by spending time outdoors and in recreation facilities. Time spent in nature positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. The programming and education provided through Parks and Recreation programs such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. Parks and Recreation facilities and programs also increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism and attraction and retention of businesses and as well as crime reduction. Our parks provide truly inclusive areas where all residents of our community are welcome. For it be resolved that I, Mark Turner, do hereby designate the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month for the city of Morgan Hill. Hey, we are going to do presentations. Looks like the one we have is the Morgan Hill Library presentation.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, guests at the meeting. Thank you for inviting me this evening. My name is Heather Gettis, and I'm the community librarian at the Morgan Hill Library. And tonight I'm going to spend a few minutes talking to you about some of the resources we have at the library that you may be unaware of. I see some of the people in the audience have heard my presentation before, so my apologies in advance for you hearing my same tired old jokes. Hopefully, there's something new that you learned this evening. So please, ready, set, read along with me. So I just wanted to start my presentation by sharing that according to a Gallup poll, visiting the library is the most common cultural activity for Americans. People go to the library on average ten and a half times per year. That's more than they go to movies, more than they attend music events, sports events, and certainly more than they go gambling, which is great because we are free. You also are supporting one of the top performing libraries in the nation. The Santa Clara County Library District was awarded a number-two ranking in a five-story library category according to the American Library Association last year for libraries exceeding a budget of thirty million dollars. The metrics that go into this ranking, of course, can only happen through thoughtful planning and collaborative development with the library district, the city, our friends groups, and our community members and their strong support. So we thank everybody for really supporting our library, and we're thrilled to be the number-two ranked library in the nation in this category. We offer depth and breadth of services that is unparalleled, and we offer it all for free. Just some information here, our library by the numbers, these are pre-pandemic numbers. Of course, during the pandemic, as other businesses saw, our numbers and our usage went down, but they've been increasing over the past year and a half, and we're excited to be seeing more people in the library. But overall, we see over six hundred thousand, sorry, we loan out over six hundred thousand items per year. We open fifty-five hours a week over seven days. We see over a quarter million visitors. We offer just under a thousand programs for free. And altogether, those services bring Morgan Hill eleven point six million dollars in value every year. Wow. Now, there's some benefits to reading. Reading can help increase your intelligence. It can exercise your brain and boost brain power. It can make you more empathetic. It can help you relax, and I'm not saying reading is boring, but it can help you fall asleep before you go to bed at night. There's also some really strong benefits to books for children. I was looking at a study recently that indicated that the frequency of reading to children at a young age has a direct causal effect on their schooling outcomes regardless of their family background and home environment. A child that's never been read to by the time they start school will have been exposed to just under five thousand words. A child that's been read to five books a day would have been exposed to one point four million words. That's a big gap, and I think it has an impact. The library is supporting the community, teachers and schools, but providing families access to books and programs that will help their kids succeed at school. Just this past year, the library district has initiated a new strategic plan. At Santa Clara County Library District, you belong, connect, and discover. I just wanted to mention three projects that the library is going to be working on here in Morgan Hill due to the input that we received from our community members, our stakeholders, and our employees. So over the next year and a half, our library will be expanding community partnerships using an equity, diversity, and inclusivity lens as we're looking for new community partners. We're going to be designing and implementing flexible public spaces, and we're going to be really looking at our lobby to see how we can make it more accessible for patrons and how we can expand access to library services over the next year or so. And lastly, we're going to be developing a pilot project with our school district to find ways to increase access to library resources for students and families. We have many, many things to bore with the library. I'm not going to talk about all of them here because really what I want to do tonight is I want to highlight some of the services at the library that you may not realize we have. So, did you know with your library card, you can receive free access to Rosetta Stone and LinkedIn Learning? Those are two different educational apps. Rosetta Stone helps you learn languages, and LinkedIn Learning provides access to thousands of online classes, webinars, and courses in business, leadership, and customer service. If you were doing this on your own, you'd be spending about forty dollars for a subscription, but with your library card on your phone or your tablet, you can access these for free. If you're looking to relax a little bit, you can access the Headspace mobile app. It's a meditation app where you can learn how to meditate. Again, that's about eight dollars a month. With your library card, you can access it for free. If you and your family are looking to spend some time local in the Bay Area this summer and looking not to spend too much money, two great programs we have at the library. First is we've got a State Park Pass and County Park Pass program where with your library card, you can get a free pass that will provide free access to any county or state park. It's a super popular program, so don't expect to walk into the library and just get a pass, but you can definitely reserve one in advance and spend some time exploring local parks in the area for free. Second, we participate in the Discover and Go program, which provides access to over fifty attractions and museums in the Bay Area for free. Again, with your library card, just go to our website, click on the Discover and Go link, and it'll show you all of the different museums that you can access for free with your library card over the summer with your family. So again, two really great programs that you can access through a library that you may not have known about. If you're interested in eBooks and e-audio versus old-fashioned print books, you could access hundreds of thousands of books through our Libby app. Everything from nonfiction, children's, teens, and adults, as well as bestsellers, books that came out just yesterday, as well as old favorites, all available through Libby. If you're a parent like me, whose children refuse to read anything but comic books, you can access our Comics Plus app, which provides you access to hundreds of comic books for free online on your tablet. If you're not interested in reading at all, but you are creative, Creative Bug is our online database of classes of everything creative. So if you want to learn how to knit, paint, or anything else, you can go to Creative Bug and learn there. If watching movies is your thing, again, through our website, you can access the Canopy app, which provides you with hundreds of online movies that you can stream from around the world, documentaries, and award-winning foreign films. If you like to read magazines, we have the Flipster app. You can put it on your phone or on your tablet, and you can access magazines just like the print magazine, except on your phone. It even makes a little flippy noise when you flip the page as you're reading it, so it feels like you have a paper magazine in your hands. It's popular magazines like Time, like Time Magazine or Wired. And again, you know, you could spend six dollars per issue, or with your library card, you could just access them for free through us. And then, you know, thinking globally all the way down to locally, over the pandemic, one of the lot of things our library was thinking about was how our residents access local information. So we implemented a project to digitize over a hundred years' worth of our local newspapers. So if you're wondering why city council made some decision fifty years ago and you're trying to understand it today, you can swing by the library and you can access all of those old newspapers online. You can keyword search them and bring them up on the computer rather than trying to go through the old microphone or newspapers. And again, that's just this hyper-local information that you're not going to find anywhere else, and we were able to provide through our library. Two special things going on this summer. Our summer reading program has already started. I hope everybody on city council has signed up. You can sign up online. It's free. Again, just finding a way to encourage kids, families, adults, and teens to read through the summer and really avoid that situation where you come back to school and your reading has backslid, and then you have to regain what you've learned. This is a way to really keep up with it. Children can read books, and they receive prizes. As well, we have special performances, activities planned all summer at the library. Again, all of this is free to our residents. And lastly, this is, I think, our sixth year of offering our Lunch at the Library program. So really recognizing that not all kids have access to healthy food and that during the school year, you access food for free at school, but during summer, if you're not in summer school, you may not have that opportunity. So we offer free hot meals onsite for children and families. It started June twelfth. It runs through August fourth, Monday through Friday, twelve P M to one P M. We have free meals for anybody that wants to come in, get a hot meal, and engage in some fun games and activities. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them, and if not, I hope you learned at least one unusual thing about our library that you may not have realized.
Thank you, Heather. Quick question?
Yeah, just a quick question. If I want to go to one of the apps that you were, do I first go to the library and then get the app, or does I just go to my App Store?
It's a little bit dependent on the app, so the best thing would be to check in with one of our librarians either by phoning us or going to the reference desk. Most of the apps you can just download to your phone, and then you select the library, Santa Clara County Library District, in your library card. There's a couple of them like Rosetta Stone that you need to go to the library first.
Good to know. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Ivan Martinez-Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. This is awesome. I'm listening to all these great programs, so I'll check them out. I wanted to know if you could share with us, there's no cost to any of this. You can go and get a library card for free, or is there any cost to that as well?
No, there's no cost whatsoever. Anybody can get a library card for free. And in fact, recognizing that fines are a barrier to access, we're actually a fine-free library now, which means there are no late fines for any of the materials that you check out and borrow.
That's awesome. Okay, and children can have their own, you know, they can have different accounts if you want to get different accounts so that everybody's not lending on the same thing.
So we leave that decision up to each individual family, so parents can have a card that they use with their children, or they can get their children their own cards to use for themselves. Okay.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, then we will go to city council reports. Councilmember Lebers.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things to report. This past week, I attended my first Santa Clara County Valley Habitat Agency Board Meeting. It's a mouthful, sorry. And it was fascinating, and I really enjoyed it, and I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Spring, who is the chair of that and ran an excellent meeting. So that was a good experience for a first time for me. I've served on a lot of committees through the years, and this is the first time with this one, so I'm looking forward to serving. And then also this week, I attended the Santa Clara County Cities Association Annual Dinner, where all the cities in Santa Clara County are represented with the council members and some city managers, some city attorneys were there. It was really great to network with people that I've known through the years and new faces. All of us from this council attended, except for Councilmember Spring, who had another engagement that evening. But the mayor was there and our city manager, so we had a really good evening. They gave us a talk about the uses of natural gas in our homes, and that was very interesting also. So thank you, Mayor.
Of course. Other reports, you know, the council members. If not, I've got two updates here, three actually. Yeah, I was at the Cities Association Annual Dinner as well. So Clean Valley Energy provided the update. I sat in for Mayor Blankley and Gilroy at the VTA meeting. I'm the alternate. She was unable to be there in person, and so the board did approve the adoption of the visionary transit network. That's VTA's vision and framework for aspirational transit services in Santa Clara County. And what this would mean is that would include increasing frequency of buses heading north. So Bus sixty-eight and Bus five sixty-eight from every fifteen minutes to every ten minutes. Now, that is down the road some. That's an aspirational sort of plan they've got. But that was something that did get passed. And also on the city-school liaison committee, the update regarding the restorative justice diversion program regarding efforts by the group to recruit and train mentors, as well as raise money for some youth sports scholarships as well. So that does it for my updates. If there's none others, we will turn to Christina for the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here this evening. Today marks the first day of summer, which is very exciting for many people. As we just heard, July is also Parks and Recreation Month, and we have a host of activities, and so I want to highlight a few this evening. The first that we're very excited about is on July tenth. And July tenth is Morgan Hill Monday for our Bay Area Panthers. As many of you might know, the Bay Area Panthers practice at our outdoor sports center. We're actually number one right now in our division, and so we're really excited about making Morgan Hill Monday with a lot of people to show up. So seven oh five, I believe, is the start of that game, and so please join us on that day. In addition, you can join us at the Splash Pad at the Community and Cultural Center on July eleventh, and you can get free Otter Pops. The Morgan Hill Aquatic Center will be hosting the Free Resident Recreation Swim Day, and so that's going to be on July twenty-first. You can swing by the Magical Bridge Playground on July twenty-second from five to seven for a luau party. On July twenty-ninth, you can stop by the mini golf course at our aquatic center for a free round of mini golf. And so this information, as well as others, are on our city website and also on our Morgan Hill Parks and Recreation Facebook page. My next announcement is about Hale Avenue and our extension project, and so I'm very excited to announce that the southern portion is going to open on July fifth. And so that's between Dunn and Spring Avenue. The northern part of the project between Dunn and Maine will remain closed, and that's until the Valley Waters Upper Yaugus Creek Flood Protection Project is completed. And that's anticipated at this point for January of twenty twenty-four. And of course, that's pending no construction delays or any sort of issues. So with the opening of the southern portion of the Hale Avenue extension, the roundabout that's located at the new Hale Avenue and West Dunn Avenue will now be open and will be in use. Next announcement is related to our Spanish Police Academy. So we've announced that, and it's being advertised on our website. The webpage and online application for this are active, and you'll find an explanation of what's involved in the Police Academy. You can apply. The first day is September eleventh, and that will be held at the Community Cultural Center. We completed one in English, and we'll do another one in, I believe, early twenty twenty-four as well. Two more items. I'm excited to announce that tomorrow we are participating in the torch run, and so that's in conjunction with the Special Olympics. And so our police department participates in that typically annually, and so they carry what's called the Flame of Hope that passes through Morgan Hill on its way to opening ceremonies at Santa Clara University. Go Broncos! The community is invited to cheer them on as they pass through town on Monterey from Vineyard to Cochran, and you'll see that from about eleven thirty to one P M tomorrow. And lastly, coffee with the mayor. It's going to be this Saturday from nine to ten at the Centennial Recreation Center. Please join our mayor, Mayor Mark Turner, and guest county supervisor Sylvia Raines for an informal conversation about Morgan Hill over a free cup of coffee at the CRC, and that's at one seventy-one West Edmondson Avenue. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Christina. Now, for the city's attorney, city attorney's report. Don?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session before this meeting for labor negotiations. There was no reportable action. The second item in the closed session will be continued to the end of this meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Not for public comment. The opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. The public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to thecityclerk@ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. With that, do we have any public comments? Yes, we have one member of the public, Michael Birchfield. Very good.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, council members, city manager, city attorney, and members of the public. It's a privilege to be able to take a moment and say a few words. I was at the city council meeting two weeks ago, and since that time, I know that there have been some issues in the city that have generated quite a lot of heat. How do I know that? I read Nextdoor. I read Facebook posts, stuff like that. And I have to say that when I was younger and not so smart, I was one that would quickly take sides in issues. But as I walked with Jesus longer and learned more about his teachings, I feel like I learned a much better way. And so I want to share with you some of his words tonight, and then I'm going to pray, but my prayer is going to be that the things that he taught in this particular place will become more and more what characterizes us as a community, men in the midst of great disagreement. So there's a place where Jesus taught his followers this. He said, "You have heard what was said by those of old: You should love your neighbors and hate your enemies." What I say to you, love your enemies. Do good to those who hate you. Best those who curse you. Pray for those who despitefully use you and persecute you. I always tried to live by those teachings, but as I've grown older and older, I found that that is a much better way to conduct ourselves. Disagreements are going to arise. That's normal to human life, but it's the attitude that all of us take into those disagreements that makes the difference. So my prayer, as I said, is that this type of attitude permeate more and more our community. And so I would like to just offer up a prayer for our community, for you and the council.
If you could do so in forty seconds, we'll take it.
I can pray in forty seconds.
Good to go.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your goodness and mercy with all of us, life we have and the breath we have, and we pray that you would still work in our community, that more and more of these words of Jesus, some his own words and some from the Talmud permeate our community, men in the midst of great disagreement, so that at the end of the day, love prevails. By this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Hey, two seconds to spare. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Mayor, we have two speakers on Zoom. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Rocket, you can go ahead and speak. You there, speaker? Mr. Rocket, eleven? Okay, next.
Maybe we can come back to him.
Come on, go ahead and speak.
Evening, Mayor Turner and Morgan Hill Council members. Happy Pride Month to Renee Spring. Congratulations. I am a member of the San Martin Neighborhood Association, and we cordially invite members of the council and the public to attend a town hall meeting on June twenty-ninth at six thirty at the San Martin Lions Hall. This town hall is in partnership with the Santa Clara County Department of Health, and the topic is led in our homes and environment, along with information about the sixteen million dollar settlement, settle, paint settlement that was given to the county several years ago. Homes originally painted with lead-based paint could qualify. I believe that Christine was going to put it in year four one one, so we're anxiously waiting for that to appear. This, the history behind this is that the county has been trying to close Reed Hillview Airport with stating a lead crisis, and they moved slowly, but they finally got it together. And there is no lead gas sold at San Martin Airport nor at Reed Hillview Airport.
Like March rejected.
What bothered me is that we were told that lead education would be given to all Santa Clara residents. And if you look at the charts, there are so many other areas that are higher in lead and in children's bodies, and we wanted to make sure that everybody was educated on the sources of lead in the home. So we cordially invite you all to attend into the public, and we wanted to make sure that we were proactive in getting this information of lead out to our South County residents through a town hall meeting, and this meeting will be held in Spanish and in English. Thank you.
Sharon. Is anyone else? Very good. We will now move on, and for the adoption of the agenda, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as requested? Motion, Councilmember Borjoli, second, Councilmember Spring, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes five zero. Mark the consent calendar. Any council members wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? Please, Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
Okay, thanks. I would like to pull one, two, and thirteen.
One, two, and thirteen. Very good. Councilmember Lebers?
I'm still looking.
I am going to pull item number nine. Councilmember Spring, anything? Councilmember Borjoli, none? Councilmember Lebers?
No, that's okay.
You good?
Yeah.
All right. So with that, we will then, is there any members of the public wishing to pull an item before we go forward?
We have a speaker for item one.
Item, okay. Very good. We'll come back to that. We're going to, at least, then we're going to vote and pass the remaining items on the consent calendar. Can I get a motion? Motion to approve by Councilmember Borjoli, second. Councilmember Spring, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes five zero. Item number one.
Okay, so for item number one, Councilmember Ivan Martinez-Beltran, are you looking for?
Okay, so for item number one, uh, council member Iran Martins Beltran, are you looking for a report? Yes, please, okay, and so I'm gonna ask Matt Mayhood, our Economic Development Director, to come forward. And this item relates to an impact fee freeze agreement as well as an impact fee, fee financing agreement.
Evening, council members, mayor, members of our community, and my fellow Morgan Hill teammates, Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director, City of Morgan Hill. Um, this item, um, I don't have a PowerPoint prepared for this item. It is, the item is a recommendation to adopt a resolution to authorize a city manager to execute an impact B freeze agreement and a sewer traffic impact fee financing agreement with Catuna Morgan Hill LLC. A hundred and fourteen room hotel development on a two point two one acre parcel identified by A P M seven two six five eight zero zero six. In short, this is the Holiday Inn Express, uh, hotel project, uh, in the Evergreen Development. This is a project that, uh, was previously moving forward prior to COVID. Uh, the project stalled. Evergreen Development looked for a new developer to come into the project. Um, the city made an introduction to the Catina Group in mid two thousand twenty-one. And in two thousand, late two thousand twenty-one, Catina Group entered into a purchase agreement with Evergreen Development to buy the two point two one acres. Um, going back a little bit in time, in October of two thousand and eighteen, the city entered a free freeze agreement with Evergreen Development for the entire development site. And that, uh, locked the impact fees for that entire development to the two thousand and sixteen and seventeen impact fee, uh, schedule. That schedule and that impact fee agreement was extended on a couple of occasions due to COVID nineteen and the impacts slowing down the development, um, in that project. Um, but that's B freeze agreement is expiring, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. So when we started looking at the Catina Group impact fees and when they were given their impact fees, when they brought forward their project earlier this year, looking for entitlements, um, they were given the fee schedule, the two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen fee schedule. And that's the fee schedule they were operating on. The city increases its fees on an annual basis, its impact fees on an annual basis. And then, uh, May fifteenth of this year, we had a significant change in our impact fees. And we started looking at how those impact fees would impact this project. And I brought it to the attention of the Catina Group and they asked that we look at and make sure that we could hold their impact fees to the existing level that when they purchased the project, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, because those were the impact fees they were expecting to pay. So city staff is not recommending a three-year fee financing agreement, but an eighteen months B freeze agreement, allowing the Catina Group to move forward. Uh, they're currently developing their construction plans. Catina Group, uh, did not just take the existing plans that they were given from Holiday Inn Express previously. They redid the plans, they've upgraded the project significantly from the previous developer, uh, making significant improvements to the project. And it's taken them some time to work through the city process, but they're now, um, you have, uh, approval to move forward, they're, uh, developing their construction plans. And we're waiting for those construction plans to come forward. And what we're trying to do is buy them about eighteen months to bring those construction plans forward, get city approval, and get the project underway. And I think the rest of the details are in the staff report. It's a significant savings to the developer, uh, and an incentive to get this project out of the ground. A typical hotel of this size, uh, will generate about thirty thousand dollars in new property tax for the City of Morgan Hill and can generate up to four hundred thousand dollars a year in T O T tax. So this project, although it does cost a little bit of money upfront to the impact fees with the city, it has a very quick payoff, uh, rate and return to the city. How to take any questions, and the applicant is here tonight.
Any questions? Council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for that, that's very helpful, um. I would like to ask some questions from the applicant, uh, if I'm able, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that, any concerns that we would have with that?
If the applicant is willing to take questions.
So is the applicant willing to take questions?
Why not? Want me in the room? Are you scared to be popular?
No, okay. Can you introduce, introduce yourself?
Uh, my name is Cosmo Fugindo, um, I grew up in Morgan Hill, uh, I, that was a library before. And when I walked in, uh, when it was city offices, I was like, wow, there's so much more red tape than books now. Um, so, um, yeah, so I, I grew up on local area, um, I've been here for thirty-eight years, which is my age, it's super curious. Um, and yeah, that's, that's pretty much, I went to St. Catherine's, walked across there and liked the librarians, so I really appreciated the library presentation.
Okay, so we have questions, if you would, please.
I do, um, thank you for coming and, and being here. I did have some questions, I wanted to know when you purchased the property, I understand you weren't aware there was an impact fee freeze, but the fees that you did look at or were presented were based on the impact fee freeze that was granted to the Evergreen Group?
Yeah, so as, um, Matt stated, um, when we were looking at the project, we were presented what the fees were at that time. We were unaware that it was under a freeze agreement.
Okay, so you purchased it in two, in twenty twenty-one, but the fees were from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen frozen now?
Hmm, wonderful.
That was the fee schedule they were given.
Okay, um. So I'm, I've talked continuously about, you know, that we should leverage our, our monies and our incentives on the items that we want to see built in the community. However, I, I did get a chance to talk with you, and I'm wondering if you could share some of the changes that you're looking at from the existing development to where we are now. You intercepted it, it sounds like almost halfway through.
Yeah.
What is the project, what was the project, what is it now?
So when we, we got to the project, it was fully entitled already. So when we looked at the building itself, we didn't feel that it was, um, the quality that it needed for, to be for the community. So we increased the heights of the rooms, um, we added a pool. Um, my God, what else did we do? It's quite a few things. Um, we upgraded the common areas from where it was before. Um, so, you know, growing up here, I, I take a lot of pride in, in the fact that, you know, I can deliver a great product for the community. So, um, I was really making sure that we got it to a place where, you know, really, it really stood to represent Morgan Hill well.
Okay, Joe, you tell me, in reading here and understanding the impact fee freeze, we, it costs us more the longer it is to pull the permits. And I realize this is only half as long. When are you planning to pull those permits?
So, um, we're planning, and so it'll take us about six months to complete the construction drawings. Um, and then we will have to submit and go through the process. And as I asked, I wanted to have three or four months of cushion, just in case anything gets caught up or there are any issues. But that is, that was the request.
Okay, and I, I have to ask, you know, what is your confidence level that you'll be able to complete the project?
What is my confidence level? Well, barring another pandemic, I'm pretty high.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd be, oh, I'm sorry, council member Borjoli.
You, um, so, um, I, I understand that you are installing a pool into this unit where the previous, uh, developer did not have that in the plan. What, what made you improve the facility, uh, and, and make it uh, more family oriented, for an example? Well, what was your, and, and incentive to do that?
Well, so I, I, I played club soccer and I played in the fields out here when I was a kid. Um, so we would have teams come in and I, I mean, I remember from when I was a kid, like, there were other teams that would come in and would come to my parents' pool, um, because they didn't have a pool at one of the hotels here locally. Um, but it, it is a huge amenity for, you know, kids when they come to play soccer, they wanna go and just hang out and have a good time. So I, you know, one, it's gonna attract obviously those customers, but it's a really nice amenity to have for, for the guests and for the city.
Uh, thank you, and, um, do, do you, do you have any, um, uh, morning, uh, breakfast items available and evening, um, soft drinks or hard drinks?
Yes, we do, all of those things.
Uh, and, and again, what made you implement those into, cause not every hotel does that.
Yeah, nobody wants to stay somewhere, I mean, it's like your house, you know, you wanna invite people in and have a nice place, right? Like, you know, inviting them to town, have a nice place, you don't, you don't want, you want the, the guests to feel good about the experience, right? So you wanna deliver the best that you can for the value that, that they need, right? If they're taking kids to soccer games, they're not gonna wanna pay three hundred dollars a room, right? But finding a good balance there is, is key.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, you mentioned, um, an R I, R O line, I think you said four hundred K revenue, um, payoff. Could you just explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, um, if you look at, um, I think it's page three in the staff report, it has a schedule of, um, the base year of the cost of the impact fee. Um, and then if they were, if they were to pay the two thousand and twenty-three impact fee, uh, the delta is about three hundred and seven thousand dollars if they just, if they do, and build building permits in the first year. Um, so that cost to the city C I P fund is three hundred and seven thousand dollars. The goal of the, uh, of the fee freeze, uh, program is that when the city starts generating revenue on these projects, the city pays back the C I P fund. So if we're generating T O T tax or generating property tax, that, that cost of that to the C I P fund can be paid off in less than a year with a fully operational hotel.
Thank you, Matt, and what is the, um, projected, uh, T O T tax revenue, uh, for a facility of this size?
So we don't provide detailed T O T for every property, but, you know, your average upper mid-scale hotel, uh, in the City of Morgan Hill can generate about four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matt, that's all my questions, Mayor.
Very good, thank you, there are no other questions, we will go to the, uh, we're gonna open the public comment. You say we have one member, yes? David Went? He says not to comment, okay, very good, we're gonna close the public comment and now we're going for council discussion. Let me just remind the council, again, this is fifteen minutes of council discussion, it's not, we're not just each taking five minutes, so we wanna be respectful of the time for each of the council members to have conversation. So are any other, let's, council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, thank you for the report to staff and to the applicant for coming up and giving some further information on that, um, I really wasn't sure where I was gonna fall on this. I do appreciate that you're coming in mid, uh, cycle on this, uh, impact fees, fee freeze. I also appreciate the enhancements that you've made. Um, again, I'll say that I think that when we use our impact fee freezes or city incentives, I want that to be to encourage development that we've had. I think that you've done a great job in trying to take something and enhance it. It sounds like you know the community here, it sounds like you're familiar with the environment. Perhaps that's, uh, you know, something that has, has impacted it, um. And so I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve this. I, I will, um, hold you and hope that, you know, we're gonna get that hotel and that you're gonna be pulling those permits. Um, sooner, of course, is always better for us, so, thank you.
Well, I'll say it, like, make a comment.
Okay, we have a motion from, uh, council member Martinez Beltran, second by council member spring, and, uh, any other comments, please, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and thank you, and, and I, I think this is a reasonable proposal. I am pretty familiar with the location where this is and the way it looks right now does look nice. So, uh, I'd like to see, see all those projects in that area being, uh, completed as we all had anticipated at some, some point, and we have to start somewhere. I'm looking for a hotel that is more catering towards the upper scale, uh, I think that's where we have the most need. Uh, I don't think you've mentioned your proposal, but I think there's a lack of meeting rooms, an event, uh, rooms. So if you still could think about adding that, the original owners didn't wanna listen to me. But here, here we are, so I'll say it again. Uh, and I also hope that if this were to go forward tonight with the approval, that we don't, that we're not gonna be told a week from now, well, they just sold. Uh, I've seen that happening very often, uh, over the years, and, and I would regret that, cause part of me, uh, standing behind this is because you are local and I like that, uh, so, so, and I wish you all the best and if my colleagues agree.
We're glad to have you, and we'll do our best to make sure that, uh, we fill up that hotel. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, that passes five zero. We will go to the next item, item number two on the consent calendar, Christina.
Yes, uh, councilwoman Iran Martinez Beltran, did you wanna report on this one as well? I will ask Economic Development Director Matt Mayhood to come forward in this particular item. It's just related to a fee freeze agreement, not a fee financing agreement related to six parcels, Matthew.
Good evening. It's been okay, all right. Um, Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director, so glad to be back. Um, this item is a recommendation to approve an impact B freeze agreement with Mercio Investments LLC and Clayton Plaza LLC, the development of six separate industrial commercial facilities located throughout the Morgan Hill Ranch and the Madrone Business Park. Uh, the recommendation is authorize the city manager to execute the impact B freeze agreement. Um, this is the Mercio Investments Group and Clayton Plaza LLC, they are the same principals, they're the same folks who, um, own and developed, uh, the Shoe Palace Building. They have, um, come forward, they own, um, many parcels, many industrial parcels in, in, uh, the Madrone, uh, Business Park and the Morgan Hill Business Ranch. They have come forward with proposals on, uh, projects on six of those parcels. Um, we have outlined what those projects are, they range in scale from about thirty-two thousand square feet to a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet.
Can I have you go through the different projects, just so everybody knows where?
Sure, you should first finish your presentation and then break them down individually.
I'm happy to break them down. Um, so there is one project at seven sixty Jarvis. It's on two point four acres, it's.
I think the mayor would like you to go through the presentation and then come back to that.
If you would, yeah, okay. Um, so the uh, developer is moving forward with the entitlement project, uh, entitlement process with the six, uh, projects. One project is entitled, um, they're, um, out to bid on that project. And then the other five, they're in the entitlement process, so they're still, uh, their square footage could vary up and down based on, um, the review from the city. Um, they, um, are, um, trying to bring these projects out of the ground all at a similar time in order to have multiple construction projects going on at one time in order to kind of leverage, uh, the size of the project and materials and contract and labor. Um, once operational, uh, the new property tax assessments, uh, over the multiple properties will easily exceed eighty-one thousand dollars a year, um, just based on a basic, uh, two hundred dollars a square foot, uh, assessment on, on the county property tax assessment. The, the potential impact fees that the developer would be paying is five point four million dollars, um, using the base year, the base year that we're using is the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three impact fee schedule. So that's this current, uh, date, that's today's, um, impact fee schedule. Um, if we make some assumptions that in the coming year, that impact fees go up four percent on an annual basis, if they take a year to get the projects out of the ground and then pay the impact fees, the cost of the city is about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. If they wait two years to come out, the cost of the city is four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, et cetera. So the idea is to give the developer certainty, uh, as to the cost of their impact fees. Um, and then incentivize them to bring that project forward as soon as possible. I think I'll go through the detail at this point.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so there are, um, one project that is currently entitled, and that's at seven sixty Jarvis. It is, um, they, they bought this project, uh, when it was already going through the entitlement process, or I think it had already been entitled. It's, um, two point four acres, forty-three thousand, uh, square feet. Uh, the second project is on Jarvis. Uh, the second project is on Jarvis. Uh, we refer to it as Mercer Number One. Uh, it's two point four acres and about forty-two thousand square feet. Third project is at eight fifty Light Post Way, which is in the Madrone Parkway, uh Madrone Business Park. We refer to that project as Mercer Two, uh three point three nine acres, fifty-four thousand square feet. And then at one eight six three five Madrone Parkway, again, in the Madrone Business Park, five acres, ninety-two thousand square feet. And then uh back on Jarvis, uh at about, it's around eight ninety Jarvis Avenue. It was a seven acre parcel there, and they're looking at a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. And then last project, Mercer Five, again, back on Jarvis, two point three two acres, estimated forty-two thousand square feet. Each of these projects that they're proposing to build is divisible, so they're not necessarily built for one tenant. They're looking at having projects that um can take two to three to four tenants, so they'll have multiple entrances. Uh, none of them have um multiple dock doors, they're, they're roll-up doors, they all can um buy the projects as they've been um going through the entitlement process, but within um our guidelines, they're not being built for distribution or warehousing, they're being built for advanced manufacturing and research and development. Would conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions? Councilmember Levers?
I know this is very early on, but have they any idea of who would rent these? I mean, have they been putting fillers out, feelers out to um, you know, different organizations that say, hey, we're building this new building? Are you interested? Or they're going to work with a marketing team on that? I, I'm concerned about more empty buildings.
Understood. They have been um marketing the sites um with their broker. Um, the city were aware of these parcels. We've been talking to potential users. Um, as far as I know right now, they don't have specific users in mind. They're going to be built spec um with the intent. Um, we have been sharing most recently with potential users um about these available buildings and when they're coming. Um, most users who we talked to, they want many thousand square feet available now. You don't want to wait your eighteen months, right? So, um, you know, it's very unusual. It's, it, Morgan Hill has never had a vacancy rate in its industrial space. It wasn't until really this year until we have Butterfield Five that's complete. Um, and those are very large buildings, seventy thousand to ninety thousand square feet. Um, and then with the seven five five uh Jarvis building empty as well, so we have some availability. Our vacancy rate industrial is eleven percent, but the market is in flux. Everybody's kind of been in a holding pattern, but we're starting to see more activity of companies looking to expand again. And, and to the north, there's in San Jose and across much of Silicon Valley, there's very little industrial space available.
Really? Okay. I have one more question. Um, with owners, um, not the developer so much, but the owners, do they plan to occupy any of those spaces? Do you know?
Not quite all.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spring?
Uh, than, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my colleague just asked a question I was going to ask as well. Uh, do you, so I, I get what we're trying to do, right? Then, and, but like a flaw, I think, if I may use that word, you know, policy is, is we might end up with empty buildings for years, right? And, and I think we should have an add-on to these policies that say there should be an incentive to also get tenants in and then get them leased within a certain time. And, and I really wonder, have you given it any thought to to tie that add-on thought to our incentive policies?
So, um, I think developers are incentivized to find tenants for their buildings, but because as soon as they spend um five million dollars in impact fees, and they spend tens of millions of dollars in construction costs, they're now sitting on an asset that they need to lease out. So they are highly incentivized to find tenants and not sit on empty rings because they want to return on their investment just like the city wants to return on our investment. So, um, there's not really we, anything we can do to incentivize uh other than encourage them to build the project and then work with them to find and identify uh potential businesses to move into them. So, um, the incentive is have them get it built. Um, and they'll have carrying costs, and an empty building has pretty significant carrying costs because you're paying taxes and fees and things on a building that's sitting empty and you're not collecting any revenue. So I think they're incentivized already just by the basic economics.
And then all those, I think, six locations uh in the industrial zone?
Yes.
The, this, so, so can you be specific what kind of businesses are allowed or what might not be allowed?
So within the I L zoning district, um, you can do research and development. You can do light manufacturing. You can do professional office. You can do medical office. Um, there are a lot of things allowed in the light industrial zone, except commercial recreation now, uh, community assembly. Um, you can't do retail. Uh, you can do um uh a lot of things, but it's, it's, so it's, there's a lot of opportunity and a lot of opportunity to bring businesses into Morgan Hill. Um, so I, we just went through the industrial reservation and optimization policy uh a year ago. That opened up some of the uses and constrained others. So I think we're pretty well focused on what we're trying to attract to Morgan Hill.
And I would just add that, um, this is a reminder that standalone e-commerce distribution is, is prevalent in all of the zones in Morgan Hill. So you, these buildings aren't being constructed for that in a way that allows that purpose, but that's also not a permitted use.
Yeah, thank you. That's correct. Thank you. Uh, that actually wasn't behind my question, but thank you for uh encountering what some might think tonight. But um, uh, I'm actually more concerned that, that, you know, if they can't lease them as intended, or as envisioned, that we then end up with a whole bunch of 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 conditional use permits to be given out to a weird area of so-called businesses that might not really be uh bringing in a lot of money then. And, and then that would, for me, defeat the purpose of the impact fee. That's why I'm asking uh, wh- what's your take on, on that concern?
My goal is not to bring you conditional use permits for uses we don't want in light industrial areas. So, um, economic development is highly incentivized to find the highest and best uses.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, is there the, these sites that you've identified, the six sites? These are all industrial sites, and they're most of the industrial sites left in Morgan Hill.
Um, no, there's, there's
How many are left after this?
Um, you know, I didn't do math, uh, but it's, there's ninety-seven acres of industrial. Um, if I'm, uh, if I'm remembering my math, my numbers right, there's ninety-plus acres of available industrial land available still in Morgan Hill, and this would account for twenty-two of it.
Okay, and how many sites are left?
Um, I don't know the number of sites. Some are, some are light industrial, some are um heavier industrial.
Okay, it just looked like it left very few sites left. Um, I'm wondering if there is, maybe this is really asking in another way, is there any correlation between the six sites? As they're looking to develop them?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, I think they were, they're looking at the size of the lots that they were trying to develop and the size of the buildings. And I think they're trying to provide, uh, you'd have to ask the developer, but I think they're trying to provide different size buildings from a forty-two thousand square foot building that's divisible by two to, you know, um, a larger building that's, you know, a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet that's divisible by four. Um, or a smaller building that's divisible by three. So they're, they're trying to provide, I think, varying sizes of buildings that can, that can flex from twenty thousand to sixty thousand square feet of space. So a user can come in, potentially take a portion of the building and then grow into it, or, or just take the whole building.
Okay, is the Shoe Palace here today? Anyone from the Shoe Palace here today?
Uh, they might be online, but they're not here.
Yes, there is someone that's available for questions if needed.
Okay, can I ask some questions?
Sure.
So, um, I believe that we have Chris Conway that's online. Um, do you see? Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Turner and councilmembers. How can I help you?
Hi, uh, this is councilmember Martinez Beltran, and I'm wondering if you could kindly share with us, I just asked um, our economic development uh director about if there was any correlation of the sites. I'm not sure if you caught that, but I'd like to see if you could comment on that.
Um, well, yes, I mean, the first comment I would make is, well, thank you for the time and consideration. This is very important um to provide certainty, as, as Matt had mentioned. We, we are approaching these projects in a, we refer to as a mix size to be able to meet the market demand so we can readily lease these properties. So we have a mix of, of um tenant spaces in these buildings that actually range down to ten thousand square feet um all the way up to the full-size building of a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. So what we're trying our best to do is to not compete with other existing vacant properties, but to rather provide modern, high-tech um robust electrical um modern current fire protection systems and highly attractive, ready-to-lease um tenant spaces. So in that regard, we looked across all of this portfolio of properties of these six specific ones to try to meet a market demand, to attract those high-tech um advanced manufacturing. Everybody wants those, uh, but they need this type of product. So, and then the second part of that is our desire, as Matt had mentioned, to be able to build these concurrently, simultaneously uh for economies of scale. As you may know, as a result of, uh, you know, experiencing COVID and supply chain and challenges with material costs, it's critical for us to be able to bring as many of these out of the ground simultaneously as possible, and then also hopefully leverage um those construction costs. But all of these are, are designed and intended to fall within the existing criteria of, of the zoning ordinance um and the uses. These are all um design review type applications. Couple will likely get elevated to planning commission for design review, but we do not anticipate any type of use permit requirements. Not sure if that answered your question. I'd love to follow up.
That does, and that's very helpful. Thank you. Um, talking about your economy is economies of scale. I, I also would like to know, uh, your Shoe Palace, you do shoes. I've been to your, your site. It's a beautiful site. Um, and everything you're doing there is, it's, it's really fantastic. Um, but I am curious why you do shoes? Why, why are you developing?
That's, that's a very good question. Um, so the uh Mercer Investments LLC is a separately-held private entity, separate from Shoe Palace Corporation. There is no, no business connection to that, other than that, uh, the executives um of Mercer Investments LLC also happen to be executives at Shoe Palace Corporation.
Okay, and you're aware, we've got, we've got a number of industrial buildings now that we have not been able to um get filled. And so that poses another question for me, if this is the right time for us to do an impact fee freeze, then we quite frankly have um some good, we have industrial buildings now that we can't get leased.
Right, yeah, and, and I won't disagree with that. You know, a, a sensitive comment I would say is that these, some of this is existing stock. Um, and for instance, the Trammell properties, we're not trying to compete with those. We have a different product than um on Butterfield. So, as Matt had mentioned, the last thing any investor or development investment company wants to do is to build a, the expense of the product and the, the systems and the permitting and entitlements, um, then have them sit vacant. They are, that is not the way to do a good business. So we've been very careful, been working on these projects now for two and a half, three years. The seven sixty Jarvis project, uh, we held back uh because of the, the bidding climate and construction costs and supply chain. Um, so now we see it as the right opportunity as the economy, uh, the current economic conditions to kind of restart these projects. So, yeah, this is a huge risk for, for any investor. So we are confident, together with our experts um in real estate and sales and marketing, and the, the way we're putting these buildings together and the years of experience the team has on, on trying to fit this product. Um, but yeah, sure, it's a gamble. Everything's a challenge um when you make this type of investment. But, so, yeah, we, we want to build them and have them occupied uh as quickly as possible. We don't want to sit on them.
Okay, um, so, you know, wonder, I mean, and I think as, as I was saying prior, you probably weren't listening, but to the item that came earlier, when we're looking to leverage our incentive dollars, that it, that it be something that we need or want, or trying to bring into the city. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with our economic blueprint. I'm sure you're familiar with, you know, the economic team. We, there is a big need for medicals. Is that something that you're looking to bring in to the fold? And that could be something, you know, as far as justifying incentive fees?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And as Matt had mentioned, um, a lot of the experience has been, you know, the old adage, if you build, if they will come. Um, there are many uh potential interested parties that we're talking to currently. Of course, we have to keep a lot of those confidential at this time. Um, but they want a sure thing. They want assurance that the, the building will be constructed, that it will be constructed to the level of quality and utility needs that, you know, they would need and have it ready to move in and not have to go through a protracted entitlement process or um a tenant improvement process. Uh, so, yes, we're tailoring them to attract them because frankly, um, those are the ones that can also drive the highest uh returns on lease revenues. So, yes, that is something we're targeting very aggressively.
Okay, um, finally, uh, my last question for you, sir, is uh Shoe Palace, so many people in the community know the Shoe Palace as the building that went up near the freeway, right? I mean, this is no, no secret here, but I will say I would encourage people to, to visit your site and understand more of what you do. Having said that, I am curious to know, you know, would you consider a plan when we look at development and we talk about six sites is a significant amount of sites to have in our industrial, um, industrial areas, um, some of the last there, would you come to the community with a plan rather than waiting to kind of show your cards until we're in design review?
Uh, well, in, like, uh, community outreach and public car charrette?
Yeah, I mean, if you've got six sites, you've got a plan and you're looking to do this simultaneously, I would be interested, and I am sure that many of, of the community members would be interested, you know, having what happened last time, going into this time saying, hey, can we get some idea of what it is that you're looking to build before we get into design review and, or will we put all of this time and energy into it?
Councilmember, if I can jump in real quick, uh, I want to make sure that the applicant understands how you're asking if they will do that. It is not a requirement?
Of course.
Okay, so I want to make sure that you, the applicant doesn't feel compelled to have to agree to this in order for us to move forward tonight.
When I'm, I'm asking if you would agree to that personally, in my opinion, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, I appreciate the question. Yeah, we, we don't have anything to hide. We think we have really good projects. Um, I will, I will say that um our seven sixty Jarvis project is fully entitled, and we're ready to pull building permit on that project now. Um, the other five properties we're currently in, in the design review process um with community development. So as I understand, there will be a, for at least some of these, um, a public opportunity to comment and view. Um, but to answer your question, we don't, we do not necessarily have any um reason not to have some type of a public forum. It's just on our experience. More information, better information usually makes people feel more comfortable about what we're doing. So I guess we could take into consideration. I think we should talk about that more and. I'd like to be able to talk to directly to the commercials. On that, but I don't, I don't see any reason why not.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I I do have one other quick question. Would you. This be something that you could do some of the sites and not all of the sites? Six sites seems ambitious.
Uh, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Tax impact fee freeze, would you be satisfied with half, getting that on half of them?
Is not the council member, that is not what's before us tonight?
I understand that's not what's before us, but we can make, we can make a change, Mayor.
Can.
And so I'm asking.
What the applicant is asking for is what is before us. I don't, I don't. I feel comfortable with putting the applicant, especially if it's the representative and not the actual. Partners in the company. Uh, we don't want to put him on the spot tonight to have to agree to something that maybe commercial executives want to agree to.
That's a good point. Perhaps we should come back.
Well, I can respond. If I may, yeah, so.
Go right ahead.
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Our our plan and our pro forma on these six properties is for all six properties with the requested fee fee freeze.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conway. I appreciate your transparency.
Other questions?
I have a discussion when we go to discussion.
Okay, so we'll open this then to public comment. We're going to open the public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this?
Yes.
I have the city clerk announce.
One speaker, Joe Bernowski.
Very good.
Go ahead and update this by the time.
Uh, yes, good evening. My name is Joe Bernowski. I'm a Morgan Hill resident. Um, I think it's apropos that the subject of impact fees is coming up tonight because. I think later on, we're going to see that one of the reasons being given to consider other incentives. Is that the impact fees are quote too high. And of course, the cost of anything is uh in the perspective of the buyer. And from a taxpayer and resident point of view, I don't think the impact fees are high enough. And I say that because specifically with respect to the traffic impact fees, I know that. The traffic impact fees are not adequate. To support the, you know, transportation infrastructure that was identified. In the 2035 general plan that was required to support. The Horizon Year building, we're way behind. I understand this is an investment to encourage a development, but it's also an investment of taxpayer dollars. And so I am glad that to hear that the city does, will track or is tracking that. Well, unfortunately, I mean, the the source of the investment is an impact fund, say the traffic impact fund. But the payback is the general fund, so it's important to. Give confidence and visibility to the public that those payouts are coming back into the impact fund. Um, I wasn't going to get into this tonight, but it kind of expanded to this. I am surprised to hear. Um, about the simultaneous and the pace at which the industrial developments are going. Not because I am opposed them, but you may remember that the general plan had a threshold, the Horizon Year threshold. And during the workshop sessions, the SAP confirmed that we are at the 1.7 million square feet of threshold for industrial space. So that requires by general plan policy that the Community Development Director. Conducted necessary EIR to go beyond what was defined in the 2035 general plan EIR. I I wrote to them a couple of weeks ago and it was a little bit vague as to what was going to happen. So I want to bring that to your attention. That there is an issue there. We're at the the general plan threshold. And it needs to be considered, especially again, the traffic impacts. So. Uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? There being none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back for council discussion. Any? Comments or conversations we'd like to have? Councilmember Leavers?
Yes, I'd like to say something. In January of this year, I drove around all our industrial areas looking for how many empty spaces there were. And there are quite a few. I I realize that and these are not, they could not be retail or anything like that. They're definitely industrial areas. So I spoke with the Director of Economic Development and. What I found out and came to realize that a lot of those are older buildings. That are not up to current standards. So it's very hard to rent those because they have to almost have to rebuild the buildings. So what we've got before us now are brand new buildings that will be completely up to today's standards, and I think that's really important. I I believe that some of the buildings someone might want to rent and might have the enthusiasm to bring them up to code. That earthquake, fire, all the different codes they have to adhere to, but I think this is an opportunity for us to get. Five new buildings in our industrial area that will be completely up to code and ready to be marketed.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Councilmember Spring?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I I think the first one that I forgot to ask early, but I think there's a typo in the. The title, it says totaling totaling 20.14 acres. I think it should be 22.54.
Is that a, is it a? Was Matt speaking in approximations?
No, I think Matt used the right number, but in what we are to prove, and it says on six parcels totaling 20.14 acres.
I'm looking at it right now, but we'll we'll double check with the total acreage is.
Okay, I just want, not before we get the right number in, yep. Uh, the only comment I I make, I I am a little bit concerned, right? The the market trends are unclear, right? What happens with. Regards to our research and development buildings. With companies still trying to figure out how much space they need for the employees. Since many of us now work from home more than we used to in previous years. I don't have the answer either. I don't know what the answer will be, but what is clear to me is that further up north, they're. Close to being built out, so if someone wants to have a business, they have to come down here. We've been saying that for, I remember 14 years ago when I was a planning commissioner, I've been talking about that. Back then, we had empty fields, not even buildings. Now we have buildings and and maybe in the future even more buildings. But that's what we need, right? We need modern building with the infrastructure that these kinds of businesses require. That that bring in the jobs for people that actually can afford to live in Morgan Hill. I've been saying that over and over again, that is crucial to a healthier community. So I'll be in favor of of. This hoping something good will come out of it.
It does look like there was a typo and. There's a typo somewhere. I mean, more likely it is 22.54 acres.
Matt, if you want to come forward, if you know the answer. So in the title, we referenced 20 points, I think, six acres, but then elsewhere it's 22.54.
And. And you just said 20 points. So the title right now reads 20 dot 14.
Yeah, there's.
22.54.
There's a typo in the in the title. It should be 22.54. The rest of the staff report is correct.
Yeah.
So there's a typo in the title. You are correct.
Yeah, so here's proof. I do read the reports.
I I appreciate the fact that you worked off of it to catch in detail.
So.
You know how many people read this?
No, I don't know.
A lot. People, I'm embarrassed that it got through.
No, don't be. I. I'll make a motion to to prove staff recommendation with the change.
Okay.
22.54.
Motion by Councilmember Spring, second by Councilmember Leavers. Is there a comment?
Yeah, sorry to make a comment. And so I agree with Councilmember Leavers in her definition of what this. Client is is trying to do. I really appreciate his focus on. You know, the medical industry, and he stated it, but more important, again, what Councilmember Leavers. Said, but but he also made a point, a bill to spec, and that's what companies want right now. The the new modern buildings. So I just wanted to make that comment before we go ahead and.
Very good.
Yeah.
Then I would agree. From an economic development standpoint, this is what we need. We do need to provide ways of having more jobs in our community, at least making potential jobs available. And so. Uh, I'm in total agreement. So with that being said.
I have.
You have a comment. That's very good.
Thank you. I'm not as convinced. I I think that. I don't think we know. I think we're in a very tenable time right now. I think that. It's an extremely ambitious ask to take on six sites and see if they can develop that and fill them when we've got vacant lots. Vacant buildings here that are new and that are top of the line. I also think. That if you haven't seen what the Shoe Palace does, they do a fantastic job. And I think that if. Looking at some of the developers that I've that I've seen and I've met with, I do think that they probably have the ability to do this. Because they've they've done a fantastic job with what they're doing now. Will it be exactly what we're hoping for? I don't know. That's that's the piece that I think looks a little bit uneasy about it. I don't want to see an extension come on this if they're being asked to do six sites. And then, you know, it can't happen because it's taking on so much. I would really look down on having an extension come back to us on that. I think that I really was impressed with their. If I'm willing to share the plan with the community, I think that it bodes well for them as a company and with the past that they've had with the community. I think it builds trust moving forward, and I I really want to commend them on that. And I also think that the willingness to look at medical, which is something that I think we need to put more emphasis on, and I'd like to see more emphasis on. That is something that does that does excite me. So we will go ahead and vote in favor of this. And I hope that we, I hope it's the shiny gem that we hope for.
That being said, all in favor? I, any opposed? There being none, passes five zero. Next item, number nine. With this particular item, I've asked to have this pulled. I wanted to speak to the land. I believe it's called the land. Statement.
Acknowledgement.
Land acknowledgement. Uh, I I don't, probably the reason I want that pulled is because I don't think it's something that, maybe Chris, you can help us out here, but certainly, I don't think it's something that each individual commission should be doing. It should be something that is done by the council. And there is always opportunity, much like Mike does, when he comes up and does prayer, he does that during our. Public comment period, this can be done at that same time. So Chris, I don't know if you have any comments. Again, what I'm actually asking for here is probably not, I don't want to, what I would ask is to just have that item pulled. From the plan so that we can approve the plan and move forward.
Mayor Chris Keaney, Public Services Director. So the the item is the work plan for the Library Culture and Arts Commission. On which the council approves for that commission as well as National Creation Commission. They have an annual work plan. On the work plan, as you've described, is one item, which is a land acknowledgement statement. So the 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 commission puts together the draft work plan with all the things they would like to include. And the commission is is looking at, they haven't done a statement, but. On their work plan, they're proposing to develop a statement just for that commission, not for the city. With any item on the work plan, the council has the ability to remove items. Add items and work with the commissioners to do so. So you would. You would have that that option. And I know that commissioners can speak specifically on the item. I know that commission chair as well as two other commissioners are here as well. Um, so logistically, that's how the the work plan could work. So you could approve the work plan without that item as a council. Very good.
Any questions? Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
Mayor, um, Chris, do you know, so what is the intention for the kind of acknowledgement is to be read at the beginning of the meeting by the Chair of the meeting? What is the?
I don't think that's fully determined. Yeah, but it would be for the commission, so likely be somewhere at the meeting.
Okay, so is this, will we see this again, or is this the commission would come up with a land acknowledgement and that would be?
Yeah, it would be at their meeting. So basically, you're giving them kind of the okay to move forward. You could ask them to come back with something for approval for them as well. Um, that's something you could do.
Those are my questions.
Yes, any other questions? Councilmember Spring?
The it's a question slash suggestion, and I was just brought to my attention the other day. Now I work for a company that gives us the Juneteenth off, so I reflected on it. And I, and I thought it was on Juneteenth, and I actually went through the agenda. And read this, and I was thinking that that would be a perfect project to add to this commission as well. Of of the many others that they're going to see, so potentially. Something the commission could help with to whatever is appropriate to also celebrate and acknowledge Juneteenth. Uh, and and the reason why why this is now a holiday for many of us. Uh, and I I think this would be the perfect commission to do something and to help and work with black organizations and community members. To come up with some good idea.
Right, so I can't speak to the commission's willingness to add that to the work plan. I think they could do that, but logistically, my council could that on the work plan. And add that item as a separate item. I do want to say again, I think we have. At least one of the commissioners like to to speak on the item.
So I'm sorry. So I'm not quite sure, do I have to bring that up as a future agenda item, or can I ask you to bring that up as a commission? I don't want to impose it on the commission, but I I. It's just, it just happened to be the week of.
I think what you could appropriately do, if the council does it, is add it to the work plan and just to frame it as consider. Working on this item, so that would give them the ability to work on it. And if they don't want to do it, they could. The overall, come back to you and say it was hard to work on. I don't think it would be imposing it to say, hey, consider. Working on ideas to celebrate this or to. Invest forward in the community. You could do something like that.
Okay, yeah, so that would be my request to add that as in something to look into, and I guess the mayor has something to remove, so. So we'll do that together, hopefully.
Councilmember Leavers?
Thank you. So Councilmember Spring, that had nothing to do with what the mayor said. This was an additional item you were adding. Okay, because I was trying to connect the two. Okay, yeah, I. I feel that this is too vague and for me to approve that, just that one.
Our, could my, they're asking questions?
Yes, so if the person who's here, the Chair, would like to explain to me. And all of us, more what they had in mind when they added this.
Come on up.
The line.
City Councilmembers, Mayor Turner, City Manager, City Attorney, Morgan Hill neighbors and friends. My name is Amanda Santiago. I am the Library Culture and Arts Commission Chair. I'm going to start at the beginning of where I'm going with this, and I will get to where we're trying to go. On Tuesday, January 14th, 2020, the Morgan Hill City Council voted unanimously in support of a resolution for the protection and preservation of the 6,500-acre property. Called Jurassic, the spiritual center of the Ammamutson Tribal Territory. That territory also encompasses Morgan Hill and the surrounding areas. The council's gesture, while symbolic, added strength to the growing imperative to protect our open spaces, agricultural lands, and history from the pattern of destruction in favor of commercial interests. Now more than ever before, our town is faced with the pressure of those commercial interests to turn a blind eye to our obligation to stand in solidarity and stewardship of the land we belong to. With all of the members of our community, and especially the Ammamutson and our American Indigenous families and neighbors. The Morgan Hill Library Culture and Arts Commission work plan includes the action item of partnering with those communities and others to create a land acknowledgement statement. Reflecting our ongoing commitment to supporting and maintaining a relationship with the land and the people in our community in alignment with the vision of the Ammamutson. To provide a hopeful and helpful future for our children. To protect the sacred sites, the places of power and the resting places of our ancestors. To support the Ammamutson in their quest for federally recognized tribal sovereignty. The right to be heard and to affect the decisions that affect the land, their beliefs and way of life. To exemplify integrity, care for the land, have compassion for all life, respect for all of our ancestors, and to show gratitude for all that is provided to us. So they learn by example, and they will be the teachers of our grandchildren. We are on the ancestral lands of the Ammamutson. Called Popol Popolotlom. Home to our four-legged, winged, bent, and plant kin. They provided us with all that we've needed for millennia. Home to our four-legged, winged, bent and plant kin. They've provided us with all that we've needed for millennia. We will care for them. Resting place of those that came before and cradle of those yet to come. They are sacred. We will protect them. In this, I humbly request your support. Thank you. And I can take any questions that you may have regarding.
Any questions? There being none, please go ahead. Councilmember Levers.
That was a lovely statement that you read and, uh, I don't understand what your action will be.
What our action will be is that at the beginning of each meeting, this statement that will be crafted. Actually, I believe the, one of the representatives for the Amamutsin are working with us to craft a statement. Summarizing the gist of this that will be read at the beginning of each meeting.
And that's as far as it'll go. I mean, yes, that is. Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I think it's fantastic. Thank you. Um, I, I am wondering, have you. You say that you're working with the Amamutsin. Um, do you have other areas or events or projects that you're working on with them?
Not yet. We would love to though. We would love to support them as much as we can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The council member, I just note too, that one of the things with the commission that we as staff try and continue to, to guide them on is. They develop this work plan and really if major items are not on the work plan, they put them on a work plan before they start significant work on them. So it comes to the council, um, to ensure that before the commission starts significant work on an item, it's, it's within the work plan of it by the council.
If I may, I also, I mean, I don't know how you want to do this, but since we're looking at their work plan, I, I don't mean to take away. I'd like to comment also on Juneteenth. Is that appropriate? Do you want to wait? How would you like to do that?
Let's get, go with questions for them and then we're going to open public comment and we'll come back.
So should I hold my questions for Juneteenth?
If you have a question, please go ahead. You have a question. Yeah.
Yes, okay. So we have received much, um, interest in having something in the community to celebrate officially Juneteenth. And I have expressed interest to the city that I would love to see something like that. Um, is that something that the. That the group has been working on. Um, in particular, I guess I'm interested, there is a, there is a flag, a Juneteenth flag. And if there's, if you guys would look at or have talked about doing any type of a flag raising and celebration with that. I'm interested to know what are some of the thoughts maybe of doing that, working with allies in the community. Can you share that?
Um, we do not have anything yet in the works, but if a request is made, we are absolutely able to discuss. And I believe I, I know a few commissioners who would pick that up very willingly.
Okay, um, I also, you know, have had interest as well that we want to make sure that our black community, being that it is a black holiday. Is very involved in leading that. So, um, you know, that'd be something I think of interest as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The question is, uh, are you willing then to not only do land acknowledgement, Juneteenth, Indian community, Hispanic community? Uh, there are many churches here that would probably love to have scripture read. Uh, how far do we go with this? How many? How many are you willing to start your meeting with and have five, seven, 10, 15 statements read? I'm going to an extreme here, but you see where we open the door here. Folks can come up during, during the, uh, public comment. They can make the land statements. They can do whatever they want to do in that time. But if you start to formalize this, it becomes, it becomes Pandora's box. And so I tonight would prefer that we approve your work plan minus that line item. So that we can continue a conversation about what we want this to look like. I will make a most, no, I can't because we have to go to public comment. Darn it. I was so close. Uh, so, uh, can you respond to that?
I believe we already go through at the end of each meeting, we do monthly relative topics. And Hispanic Heritage Month, we recently did Caribbean, American Heritage Month. We're doing Pride Month this month. So each month, we have various groups and various interests who are represented in our meetings. And I think we're open to embracing all of those.
But on a, at each meeting, not, I mean, so would you, then would you consider doing. Like Juneteenth you would do in June, land statement you might do in one month. So are you talking about doing the land statement every meeting?
Land statement would be every meeting because every meeting we are in Morgan Hill. And in every meeting, we are on the ancestral lands of the Amamutsin.
But Juneteenth, you, you can, it would be a monthly acknowledgement. I'm sorry, it would be an annual acknowledgement.
What would we be acknowledging in those?
I don't know. The question is asked tonight whether or not you would be willing to do some acknowledgement of Juneteenth.
Absolutely. And that's something to discuss with the commission.
Exactly. And that's my point. I think this is something we need to discuss at a much greater level. Instead of saying tonight, just come up with something and, and we'll, we'll live with whatever you come up with. I would rather not do that. I think the council needs to be more. More involved in these kinds of statements for commissions that are under the authority of the, uh, of the council. And so that's where I'd be going with this. So I will now open public comment. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a quick question for you. Um, one of our public comment speakers is on the commission. Is she able to come up and answer questions or would you prefer to keep that under public comment?
Make public comments but not answer questions.
Perfect. Simone.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to talk about land acknowledgement. I'm so, Morgan Hill together. As our city motto, right in the three screens up here and then Morgan Hill cares. This is how we showcase ourselves in welcome and traffic signs all over our city. And I couldn't be more proud. So land acknowledgement statements, um, I'm just here to emphasize the impact of these statements. Now, what we are talking about, um, in LCAC is for our meetings. They're a much related way to recognize and honor our indigenous peoples who have lived and continue to live here. Uh, for the past thousands of years and they're still among us. But Amamutsin, of course, are our first peoples here in Morgan Hill. And these statements are an important part of the caring, inclusive and just society in which we all want to live, like here in Morgan Hill. To recognize historical facts, respect and protect the rights of a historically marginalized and desegregized first peoples. And help to conserve and preserve the cultural heritage and history, something that we all want to do. Um, like land acknowledgement statements, journaling, they build bridges amongst all of us. That is a part of a beautiful healing process that can only make us stronger together. So the incredible compassion and empathy of our lovely community was demonstrated just last month. By the tremendous success of the red dress exhibit in the library, highlighting the injustices towards our indigenous population. And I have no doubt that we can all rise again and see that a land acknowledgement statement is just that. It's just a wonderful path to healing the past injustices faced by our wonderful first peoples. And as a step towards building an inclusive and just society. I just go and see, request you to consider the value of land acknowledgement statements in a path to a more inclusive and just community. And this to be true, that showing empathy and understanding towards the indigenous first people could only have wonderful outcomes. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? I'll teach others Napoli.
Do I go here?
There's better. Yep. Thank you, Kathy.
Um, I'd like to just show you something because as some of you know, I go to third grade classes. And I have been going there for almost seven years to do an hour long presentation on the Native Americans. So I don't know how much you can see, but how many of you here have been to Chi-Tak-Tuk? It talks about the Native Americans. We have proof that the Native Americans have been here in Morgan Hill for over 10,000 years. But what I did was I did, and I showed this to the third grader. So I start here. All the way over here. And this is twenty feet. And so just for math purposes, I use one foot to represent five years, I mean, five hundred years. The Spanish came to Morgan Hill in seventeen sixty-nine. If you do your math and every third grader can do it. You know that, that the Spanish came here 254 years ago. So if we use my timeline, then Europeans, whoever they are, have only been here for six inches. Of that twenty feet, six inches. So when I talk to the third graders and I tell them that the Amamutsin have been here for thousands and thousands and thousands. And thousands and thousands, so chance, and thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of years. Third graders understand that's a long time. And what they understand is that we are the first people. I am a Native American. I am fifty-two percent Native American and I want to show you some. To prove that I am Native American, I have to submit documents. My grandmother, who was at the Sherman Boarding School. From Susanville all the way to, uh, Riverside. She ran away three times because she saw the murder, the abuse, et cetera. I had to submit all these documents to prove that I was Native American. How many of you have to prove who you are? When you say you're Italian, when you say you're Swiss or Swedish, any of you, who has to prove that? Only Native Americans. So we are not like every other community. And so when we talk about over 10,000 years here, we're not asking something very long. A land acknowledgement statement is two sentences. Two sentences to say that the Amamutsin were here and actually are still here. When I go to the third grades and I ask them, what happened to the Native Americans? They say they're all dead. Because they see TV, they see Ukraine and what happens in war and conquering. So Native Americans are different than any other group. All we are asking for.
Kathy, it's time. You gotta wrap it up.
Acknowledgement statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll be coming.
So, uh, councilmembers, uh, mayor and public, uh, just wanted to comment briefly on, uh, this issue and, uh. Well, I do think that speaking and saying something at each meeting is important for, uh. Uh, you know, respecting the Amamutsin and the native community. Um. I just feel like there's a lot more actionable things that we could be doing, you know, for Native Americans and, uh, the Amamutsin. Uh, I could probably name a few, but like, you know, really like designate some open space, maybe even like a casino. I know that's crazy, but like something, you know, like something that's a little more tangible and, uh. You know, uh, also just wanted to comment with the Shoe Palace, that six, uh. What do you call it? Like the sixth lot, uh, area, right? So I used to work for a construction company, design, build. It's with the end user in mind. So I don't really see why the question is like, we're wondering like, oh, are we going to like. Have these just sit here for like months and months or even years and they're just empty? Like, why can't we have this developer somehow? You know, because I mean, everybody's in business to make a profit. You can just build your thing, sell it. You're done, right? Not everybody wants to be a landlord. So, uh, why can't we somehow like, you know, do some design build? Have the end user in mind and like sign a contract and then let's talk. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, we have a speaker on Zoom.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, this is Jennifer Blayla. I find this a very interesting and relevant topic. I wanted to point out a logical fallacy called slippery slope. The idea of that fallacy is that it's when a person argues that one action will inevitably lead to a series of actions. I recently returned from a journey in Australia where even the flight. Deck acknowledges the, the native lands across which we travel. I think it's a profound reminder of, um. Of all of us. So I can't see why there's such a big deal about having some kind of verbal acknowledgement in this meeting. For our native population. That's all I have to say. Oh, and don't forget those logical fallacies. Slippery slope is the one you need to look at.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? No further speakers?
Yes, we do.
Excuse me, we have one more.
Hello, thank you. Um, can you hear me? Sorry.
So we can hear you.
Okay, great. Cause my card turns the speaker off. Um, yes, I would like to respond to what the mayor said, his what about isms. Regarding people bringing scripture. Um, I don't think, I think that's kind of a, a continuation of the logical fallacy. Right? The Jennifer was talking about. I would say. Originally here are not reading their scriptures. So I think separating church and state is important. So reading scripture is not really comparing apples to oranges. Okay, it's kind of a what aboutism. So I'd like to respond to that and make sure that we really kind of stay on track here. And we don't get off of, um, off track by, uh, trying to bring in religion. Thank you.
Anyone else? No speakers. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Uh, any comments? Councilmember, uh, Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everybody for your comments and your input. I, I do agree. I think that this is a very simple, I think it's a simple ask. I think it's an appropriate ask. It is for our library and cultural affairs commission. Uh, and I see no problem with reading a land acknowledgement of people who were here first and have been stewards of the land for. Thousands of years. Um, as we all know, there's been horrible genocide of the indigenous peoples. Uh, and so unfortunately, they don't get to have, you know, the honors. Um, of having somebody from their culture, maybe necessarily be one of the first. Jesus or the first woman or the first event thing, really, quite frankly. And so. What does it hurt if we do a land acknowledgement? I think it's appropriate. I think it's probably passed due. I will be asking that we consider that for the council ourselves. I think we should be doing that here. We're behind, we're real behind. And, and so, uh, so that's, that's what I think on that. And I'd also like to comment on the Juneteenth. And I really do hope that, um, that this can be folded in. I didn't see anything in the work plan, but it probably was after everything had been submitted. Um. I'm not sure where, I, part of me thinks that, you know, I'd love to see the commission support. Um, maybe a movement from the black community. Uh, I think it's important to have allies as well. So I don't want to undermine that whatsoever. Um, but just as we have had our pride flag raising, I think it's important. We do that for, you know, for, um. What am I missing? It helped me, um, the Indian community. We also do that. And we do the six, six to September for, you know, for the Latino community. We did the Caribbean community.
And that's, I, I, again, I think it's, I think it's great. And, and they should. They, they can put on festivals. They can do all those things.
Yes.
That's not what we're talking about here.
Well, the land acknowledgement mayor is not, it's very different than an event. Um, I did hear what you were saying, and so I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear with that. You know, an event. That's fine. You could do different events, as you're saying, maybe for the month or what have you. The land acknowledgement is really saying, this land was stewarded by the native peoples. Let's give a quick honor and homage to that.
I think that can easily be done during public comment. I, I don't know why that is somehow unacceptable.
I do during public comment.
Public comment. The commissions all have public comment periods.
Who would do the public, that would assume that somebody from the community would be to be there to do the public comment every time. Just as we do the pledge of allegiance. There's nobody here who comes and is called up to do the pledge of allegiance. I don't think that it's major cause. I don't want to, I know that everybody else needs to speak and, and thank you for reminding me last time. So.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Levers.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. A little conflicted on this one. Having been a commissioner for six years, not on this particular commission. I want to remind the council and the people in the audience and, um, the director who oversees this commission. These are guidelines. These are not set rules. These people are volunteers. They don't have to report at the end of the year that they missed a line, okay, and they didn't do it. No, we have to carry it over to next year. That's how commissions work. These are goals. So I wouldn't say that. It is absolutely necessary to put this in there because it isn't necessarily necessary to happen. You might skip a month where you don't say it just because of time, okay, or something like that. So that's where my confusion. So that's where my confusion comes because I feel like you're taking this to a point where you want to add this to your agenda every month. And really, it's not an agendized item every month. This is a goal that your commission has. And if it happens every month, that's fine. Because it's on your work plan. But if for some reason it doesn't happen, I don't want you to feel like, oh, we failed or that they didn't take us seriously or whatever you might feel. I can't imagine, but remember, you are commissioners. We value you as volunteers, but you are not employees that are set in stone to make all these things happen. And it doesn't reflect on Chris if you don't, because this is extremely aggressive. I mean, I looked through this. I was like, whoa, that's a lot of things to get accomplished in a year. So I guess I kind of want to say relax a bit if that's possible. And I would probably prefer to not have this as an agendized item on your commission goals, okay? Just because I think the pressure that you would feel to have this happen every month is not necessary pressure you need to put on this commission.
Councilmember Spring.
Yes, so, so I, I don't see the big deal. I completely get what's behind it. You know, look at everything that's on here. This is the only thing, the only two sentence statement, the only thing we do for, for our, our, the first people in Morgan Hill. The only thing. The, definitely not. I, I, when we had the discussion about what to do with the Villa Miramonte property, I said, you know, that the history of Morgan Hill didn't start with Diane Murphy and it started well before then. And that, that's part of it, right? And, and, and if the commissioners want to do this, by all means, let them do it. What's the harm? I don't, there's no harm in doing this. And it's, it's sending out such a strong signal to, to Native American community in our area that, that, that at least some of us do see them and then want to learn from them and, and want to learn about their history. Their history is our history, our history of Morgan Hill. And that's part of what that commission is tasked to do. So I think we're making a big deal out of, of something that I don't think intended to be such a big deal. If it disappears from the work plan, you know, one of you is chair, just do it, right? Like we have the silent invocation. Or, you know, me being an atheist, almost every meeting we have a pastor here. And I have no problem with that. I listen respectfully as well. And I, and I think we all can do that, right? We, we might not necessarily agree or identify with it. But we can listen and, and, and sometimes something good is being said. And if those two sentences hurt anyone, then I really, really think we have a big problem in that. So I have no problem with it being in it. But if, if that prevents us from approving the work plan, then take it out and do it anyways, the, the way you think ought to be done.
Councilmember, I appreciate that. And certainly, again, as, as the pastor does that during our public comment, I've said that a statement can be made during public comment as well. I tried to eliminate it. I just don't think we should formalize it. Especially when we haven't even seen it. So I am going to make a motion that we pass the work plan minus that line item. And that we have further discussions on it another time. Second. I've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Yeah, I respectfully like to make a substitute motion to approve the work plan with the land acknowledgement.
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, so we have, help me with those, Don, we have two motions.
So there's, yeah, so it's typically what, what is amended the motion by substitution. And then she got a second, so that we'll go first. If that motion fails, it goes back to the original motion.
Okay, very good. So all in favor of?
Before you do that, could someone, because I, I really didn't understand your substitute motion. Could you state it?
This is a motion, this is a motion is to adopt the work plan as proposed.
Correct.
And so in other words, my, my motion was to remove that line item. Hers was to, to pass it as it is. All in favor? All opposed?
May.
Okay. That fails two to three. And so we go back to my motion, which was to pass the work plan minus that item. Something to talk about at a later time. All in favor?
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that.
No, I don't think so. Can you?
I don't know.
I think the question's been followed, so.
We're going to move forward. So, yeah. Okay, all in favor? I. All opposed?
No.
That passes three to two. Thank you. And move on to item number thirteen. Christina?
Yes, I believe councilwoman Martina Savon. Martina Savon pulled this one. Do you want to report? Yeah, I just wanted to.
Can we just take a quick five minute break?
Yes.
That work. I'm going to be back here in five minutes.
Okay.
You got it. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are going back to item thirteen. Christina?
Right. So I was just asking, would you like to report on this item?
Yes, please. Would you say?
She's pulling the card.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes. So this is item number thirteen, and this relates to some pending legislation. And so this is Senate Bill 623, which is related to workers' compensation. And so how our policies work is that if there's legislation that we're asked to take a position on, or we see that we should take a position on, with a policy that speaks to when a, the mayor or myself can send in a letter of support or opposition to the pending legislation. And there's parameters upon which we would do that. And it would happen before we're able to bring it to the council. So this case, we signed on to a coalition letter on May 31st related to this bill, basically opposing the legislation. And so a couple of things about this. So we were asked to, to, to sign on to this one. So it was a stand, it was a standalone letter from the city wasn't prepared in this case, but rather just an email was sent with our name. And it helps to strengthen efforts to educate legislators that the intent of this bill is to extend post-traumatic stress injury. It's not based on actual experience or analysis. And so bottom line is this, if this legislation was passed, it would drive up costs for public entities that provide emergency services. But all that said, the city does take workers' comp claims seriously. And we want to ensure that all teammates receive the proper treatment when necessary. All claims are reviewed and assessed appropriately. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the specific pending legislation. And I also have, you know, Michael Horta, our human resources director, that can answer any questions as well as our city attorney. Thanks. I wanted to see, I don't know if it would be you, Christina. Can you tell us what specifically this legislation says? I, I, Don?
I mean, what it does is expand a presumption of PTSD or psychological injury is work-related to a new category of employees. It extends the presumption for peace officers who are involved in a traumatic event. But the issues are related to their work. It applies the same presumption to other categories of employees, including if there's anybody involved in public safety.
So for example, what would fall under this?
So if, if somebody who is a a public investigator, a public security officer, you have those in Morgan Hill. We do have dispatchers, telecommunications, school resource officers. And if they are suffering from a post-traumatic stress type injury, there's a presumption that that is work-related. Keep in mind, we still, it, what it, the only thing it changes is that the presumption is now that it's a work-related injury. If one of our existing employees is involved in a traumatic incident and we're, and we're able to determine that that it was primarily or partially or in large part based on what happened at work, they still pay for their workers' comp benefits. What this means is 10 years from now, if a public safety dispatcher says, I'm suffering from stress, it's presumed that that's work-related regardless of when the occurrence occurred or whether there's a specific traumatic incident, or whether there's something else that's going on, on in that person's life that might have caused a traumatic injury. It's presumed that it's work-related no matter what. That's the concern.
There's no time limit on it. And there doesn't have to be any type of documentation that this existed. I'm thinking from what you said, that you have, you know, firefighter and they see they're traumatized because they see a teenage young girl who's killed in a car crash. That's pretty traumatizing.
And, and the law already provides presumptions for those types of jobs where you see traumatic, where you, where you see something traumatic on an almost daily basis. It's reasonable to presume that the injury is caused by that trauma. I, I think where we're, where I think Pal Japa and the other, and the agencies, including, we are concerned about expanding that presumption. Not that we shouldn't be helping people or teammates who might have suffered a traumatic psychological injury. But where there's a presumption that that psychological injury is caused by work. And regardless of whether or not there's any evidence to support that, that's where we see that expansion going too far. And it would significantly increase our workers' comp costs. We're self-insured for workers' comp. So it means
Okay.
taking money away from a general fund.
And so I, I do want to understand though, those two. So is there a time limit? And does it have to be documented?
I don't believe that it's a time.
So I, this bill would instead repeal that provision on January 1st, 2022. And it says for injuries occurring on or after January 1st, 2024 expands its scope. So it does go out further.
And, and this, and then the second part of the question, that's, that's the whole point of a presumption. A presumption means that it is that it's presumed that it's work-related. And so, so there is no requirement to prove that it was related to a traumatic incident at work.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spring.
Yes, so, so I tried to figure out as well what's behind it. So, so it's already the law right now. Default for firefighters and peace officers. And then what this bail would have done, it would have extended the timeline of the bail through, through 2032. The law that we already today have in place as we speak. The add-on is they added a couple more groups of, of, of employees. Most of them don't apply to, to anyone in Morgan Hill. From what I can see, I think the, the dispatches, I think would be the add-on. There's, there's 10 people in, in our department or so. So, so I, I don't, I don't understand the concern of our city of Morgan Hill. Again, it's the law already as it applies today. Extending it to very few employees only. I think we're making, again, a big deal out of something just because someone screamed and said, cities, you need to, need to do. But I, I read the bail and, and I read it and it's just continuing what we already do right now. And that, that in all those years that I've been on the council, I have anyone, has anyone said, oh, there's this floating around and it costs us tons of money. So, so why, why do we have a concern now?
So you are right. It does expand it and expands it to dispatchers, telecommunications and so forth. We don't have firefighters that would be impacted by this. And while it hasn't been an issue, it could be. You know, and so it does extend it out to 2032. And so to prevent the possibility that it could impact us, we thought it would be best to oppose it. And just for the record, the League of California cities also put in an opposition.
Like they understand it, but just because they do it, we have to look at it from what we do as a city of Morgan Hill, don't we? And so the impact compared to what we have today is extremely minor. And that's right.
I would just add, it's not just the 10 minutes. It's in a lot more people, but it's, we have MSOs and CSOs and animal withdrawal officers, other peace officers that aren't covered currently.
Okay. And i- in addition to that, it could impact our workers' compensation rates. And so that would be yet another reason to oppose it because our rates could go up if this were to be passed into law.
Good. I get it. Councilmember Levers.
The rates would go up because we would now have a larger pool of people that we are ensuring. So I think that's what we should consider when we look at the whole picture of this. So I understand why we are opposing it.
Councilmember Bojole, if nothing else, then we will.
The mayor.
Very good. Open public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this? No member of the public requesting to speak. Thank you. We'll close public comment. And if there are no further discussion, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve. Are you saying you want to, you have a, you have a comment, discussion time?
Yeah, I wanted to, I think councilmember Levers is second.
I have a motion by councilmember Bojole, second by councilmember Levers, comment by councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm not in favor of supporting this. I think that, you know, it sounds like it's a minimal impact for me. And I think that if we are exposing our employees to that potential trauma, I think we should go ahead and, and let that extend. It's minor. I, I, there's tons of cities on the League of Cities, and I'm sure this is coming from other cities where this probably impacts them greatly. It doesn't seem like that's going to be the impact to us here, nor have I heard any, you know, anything from, from my circle. So I, I am not going to support this. And I actually would ask that we don't support it. I don't see why we, I think we should support. It's pending legislation, but it just expands what's already there. I, I don't see any reason for us to oppose it.
I get it.
So I will, I will move to, you know, we've got one on the table.
Yes, we do.
So then I guess, you know, I would have to do a substitute motion again.
Okay. And what is your substitute motion?
To I would move to not ratify opposing this pending legislation. So I don't know. How would I word that, Don?
I think, I think what you would have to do is move to rescind the city's statement in opposition to the legislation.
Okay.
So you moved to rescind. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
May.
That fails two to three. So we go back to councilmember Bojole's. Okay. And so all in favor? I. Any opposed?
May.
That passes three to two. Okay. Onto public hearings. This is item number fifteen. Who's coming forward on that one?
Yes, item number fifteen. We should be having both Jennifer as well as Adam making their way up here for this item. Item number fifteen is a public hearing and it's for our crossmen's at Morgan Hill.
Evening, the ambroski principal planner with the city. So the item before you tonight is a design review permit as well as a best intended map and an EIR for the half dividend Crossman's project. So the product site is approximately 33 acre size comprised of four parcels located on the southwest intersection of Half Road and Mission View Drive. Mission View, Half Bird, and the future extension of the Paul Drive, bound to the site to the east, south and west. And the request before you tonight again is a best intended map and design review for the Crossman's project to construct a total of 269 residential units comprised of 56 courtyard style single-family homes, 64 duets and 149 townhome style condos. And also an EIR was prepared for this project in compliance with CECL. The general plan land use does nature for the site is residential attached low with a net density range of six to 16 units per acre. And the project is proposed just over And the project is proposed just over nine units an acre. The product site is located in the residential attached low R A L thirty-five hundred zone district. Which allows for a minimum lot area of three thousand five hundred square feet. However, chapter eighteen point forty of our zoning code, which is alternative stands for medium density residential development. Provides alternative standards, which this project is taken advantage of mainly with reduced setbacks and lot sizes. The R A L's zone district allows for duet, single-family attachment, single-family detached drones. Uh as well as accessory structures as proposed for the project. Or as proposed by the applicant rather. And the product site is mostly undeveloped and consistent grassland and followed out of cultural fields. Surrounding existing uses included mixture of currently vacant land as the product site is located along the city boundary. Uh south of the product site across Half Road is a grass field, which is outside the city limits. East of the site across Mission View Drive. Is a field with orchards and associated structures outside the city limits. And a single-family residences that we include it within the city limits. North of the site is a adjacent vacant parcel land, followed by a health center and associated parking lot. And then west of the site is currently vacant land, which is being prepped for the future Cochran Tech industrial project. So here's a site plan of the site. And as you will see along. Uh Mission View Drive and Half Road, we have a single-family courtyard style homes. Along with a a larger landscape area, a buffer, landscape buffer along those roads. And then in the middle of the site, we have the attached duets. And then along the extended or the future extension of the Paul Drive. You have the townhome style condominiums. And one thing I do want to point out is that um along half or the future extension of the Paul Drive, this is where the. Uh Cochran Tech Industrial Park will be located. And so these townhomes, the townhome condominiums might as well serve as a buffer both uh. Usually and um for other uses of. Extended on to just to the east of the site um. On that Cochran Tech project, uh just to reorient to. Uh this site plan is flipped. So north is to the left here. Um south is the right. So west would be Paul Drive is. And so here we have a example of some elevations. This will be the single-family courtyard style homes. On the next slide, I have uh the townhomes. So I'm sorry, the duets. And then the following slide would be the townhomes. And as you can see throughout all these elevations. It's a provided varied roof lines of being complimentary to the existing neighborhood to uh the northeast. And really just flows with the community. And here's an example of the material boards. So the facades include a mix of natural high-quality and durable materials that are appropriate to the architectural style. They enhance the building or circulation that are compatible with the surrounding developments I mentioned on the previous slides with elevations. Uh they also propose a three hundred sixty degree design with the materials that include stucco, board and baton siding. Horizontal and vertical lap siding, stone, metal deck railings or cable railings. And composition shingle roof or racy metal roofing. So as I mentioned before, this is a best intended map that to facilitate the development of two hundred sixty-nine units. Uh where the city, and one of the things about the best intended map is when the city approves or conditionally approves the best intended map. Repival shall be confirmed a vested right to proceed with development and substantial compliance. With the ordinances, policies and standards in effect on the date that the city has determined. That the application for approval of a best intended map is complete pursuant to the government code. Moving on, as I mentioned on the beginning. The project was um required an E I R. So an E I R was prepared for this project in compliance with SECA. An E I R um for many of us know is an informational document that assesses potential boma impacts of a proposed project. As well as identifies mitigation measures and alternatives to the proposed project. The draft, the I R along with appendices. That was made for available, made available for public review for a sixty-day comment period that began back on November fourth, twenty twenty-two. And ended on January third, twenty twenty-three. Letter received during that circulation of the draft E I R and the responses to those letters are included in the final E I R. As well as a mitigation monitor report of programs prepared for this project. The draft E I R identified that there would be significant impacts to agricultural transportation due to proposed project. And as describing the draft, the I R, the proposed project would convert approximately sixteen acres of prime farmland. And although the project will comply with our agricultural mitigation ordinance within our zoning code. By preserving a minimum of one acre of agricultural land for each. Uh one acre of agricultural land converted to a non-agricultural use. Uh the E I R has stated that SECA case law firms that prints that the a loss of agricultural land. Uh convert it to a non-agricultural use. Uh is irreversible and protection of other existing farmland does not fully offset the lost farmland. Rather prevents further loss. So therefore, the E I R determine that this is a significant and unavoidable impact. The draft E I R also describes that vehicle miles travel impacts can be reduced. However, the project would not fall below the applicable residential V M T per capita threshold. And would be considered a significant impactful impact as well. The V M T for the residential uses in this area of the city is approximately thirty point five V M T per capita. And the project is proposed would generate just under twenty-seven and a half V M T per capita. With V M T mitigation incorporated, which requires a. Uh T D M plan to reduce V M T and the requirement to contribute to either M O G O. Will provide a hundred percent subsidies to V T A transit passes. The project still can't reach a V M T per capita of twenty point nine four. So therefore, this would be considered a significant unavoidable impact of V M T. For all the other subject areas, the impacts were determined to have no impact or have a less than significant impact. With the implementation of mitigation measures. So switching gears from environmental to L O S. Uh the L O S factors were evaluated in the E I R or were actually included in the I R. However, as we all know now, the SECA limits the evaluation of transportation impacts to V M T only, not L O S. However, the transportation impact analysis prepared for the proposed project identified four intersections as. Um labeled on this slide. And therefore, the proposed project would be required and the proposed project is conditioned. To pay a fair share contribution towards these four intersections. However, although developers required to pay a fair share contribution contribution. At the Cochran Road and Mission View Drive intersection, developer would be required to install a second northbound left turn lane on Mission View Drive. The planning commission reviewed this project on May twenty-third. And makes first concerns in regards to pedestrian access along adjacent roads and their intersections. Primarily sidewalks and crosswalks to access Live Oak High School. And during the planning commission meeting, staff clarified that the proposed project will provide pedestrian improvements. Along the project fundages along Mission View and Half Road. And the future extension of the Paul Drive as well. It was also clarified that the proposed project is along the city boundary. And that the Mission View Drive and Half Road intersections was not entirely within the city limits. And therefore, the installation of any signals and crosswalks or associated improvements at that intersection. Um must be coordinated with the county and approved by Santa Clara County. And those approvals will be installed uh when warranted. And I also want to note, as I mentioned before, that the property owner of the proposed project. Will pay a fair share contribution towards those intersection improvements. So once again, on May twenty-third, the planning commission made a recommendation. Uh to approve the design review. And best intended map subject to conditions of approval. And to certify the E I R as well as approve the mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. And adopt finance, the significance and statement of overriding considerations. Look to changes though, and these changes have been reflected and the bill pointed on this slide. Uh the first one is to revise mitigation measure T R N two point one. If you part of the development of a transportation demand management plan. The T D M plan to reduce V M T to and from the site. So as evaluated in the E I R and as mitigated or the mitigation matter measure identified in the I R. Is that the T D M plan uh would require the project applicant to either make a financial contribution to the city's on-site demand voucher service. For example, M O G O. Or during project operations contributes to the city's on um certain. Or during project operations to have the H O A provide one hundred percent subsidized annual B T A passes. The planning commission felt that having the H O A provide those passes. Um was not fair. And so they amended the condition as well as the mitigation measures. To require the developer instead of the H O A to provide the one hundred percent subsidized annual B T A passes. However, I want to note that the one hundred percent subsidized is just one mechanism that could be used. The other one is to provide a financial contribution contribution to M O G O. So it's an either or. The other change is that the planning commission recommended adding a conditional approval to notify future residents. Of the proposed projects of possible internal street extensions to the vacant properties north of the product site. And that's shown on this image down here. Um so showing that that road could potentially go through to the north to the adjacent vacant property. On this slide, I have the findings that are necessary to make for design permit. So those findings are that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, that it's complies with the zoning code. That substantially complies with all design guidelines. But it has been reviewed in compliance with SECA. And that the proposed development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. And then finally, the last one, the proposed project complies with all design review criteria. As detailed in the planning commission staff report, the project has been found to be consistent with all these findings. And on the next slide, I have the finding for the best intended map. And so the project has also been found to be consistent with the city's general plan. Consider a neighborhood circulation patterns and provide future connections. So in summary, uh this project, the Crossman's project is a S P three thirty application, subject to the permit streamlining process. And so it's also subject to effective standards, which has been designed consistent with the December two thousand nineteen. Residential development design and development standards that we had in place when this project was submitted. And as I mentioned, uh the I R was prepared and there was significant avoidable impacts for our cultural conversion of V M T. Therefore, as part of the approval, it requires a statement of overriding considerations, which is included in the packet. And that concludes my presentation. Uh I just want to note that we do have our consultants, uh E I R consultants in the audience as well as online, uh simple in person and virtually. And we also have the applicant. Online uh that wishes to make an open statement. And then there's another applicant in the audience that would like to speak as well.
Very good. Thank you. We're not. We're going to get to the applicant when we get into uh public comment. Did you before we go to questions, Mayor, I neglected to remind the uh council that this is a quasi judicial matter. Um and council members are required to state any explicit comments they had. And so before asking questions, this would probably be a good time to do that. Okay. Has anyone had any conversations with anyone from the company? Uh Councilmember Bojoli.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Yes, I I did have a a meeting with one of the um. Uh his name is Joshua. Um and basically what he explained is what you explained in your presentation to me. So that was the extent of the conversation.
Very good. Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilmember Lebers?
Yes, I also met with the applicant and um. It was exactly what you just presented to us, nothing. That was unusual or different.
Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I met with the applicant. Um I was here tonight as well. I also met with the Responsible Growth Coalition, and I also met with the uh. Community members.
Okay, and I had a conversation with someone from uh from the company today, just asked if I had any questions about the project. That was made conversation there. So with that, keep in mind, council, uh this is clarifying questions here, not to make statements. Or anything regarding what you would decide to do on this project. It is about clarifying questions. Once we get through with clarifying questions, we will then go to open comment, at which point we will have the applicant speak and have up to ten minutes. Uh and so that's where we're at at this point. So anybody have any clarifying questions, Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation as well. We, you know, this is another one of the projects that. We probably have to say yes, no matter what. Uh and and and. That there are at least two areas in the E I R uh that cannot be mitigated. And then uh there's a couple proposal of what to do. Um and then we have to overwrite those proposal, whether one likes them or not. Uh and and then to question to the city attorney. The 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 first one is our uh why why did we choose a mitigation of the um. Act Land one to one, our act, act land preservation policy says a minimum of one to one. Why didn't we choose one to two?
That is question two, that is for.
I I don't know if it's a legal question or or not. It's it's related to E I R, but that is not a legal question.
Okay.
So in our zoning code, it it states to have that type of um it's our a policy or code. That states that if there's any conversion of agricultural land, but we do have a condition that it's a one to one. Condition. So if there's uh so in this project, there are sixteen acres of prime farmland. And so sixteen acres would have to be protected elsewhere. And so I'm not sure how that one to one came to play. I know um. Throughout the state, that's a common mitigation or a common condition that lots of cities have um.
Sounds like it was a decision made by the applicant.
For this, it's a it was a decision, um I'm not sure how long ago, but it's in our zoning code. And so.
I just complied with the zoning.
I comply with the zoning.
I don't know the reason we chose one to one. I didn't know that that is what um was chosen and. Um before I started working here and that's what's in.
Okay, see that. That's why I looked at you, a city attorney. I I I was one of the creators of our act land uh policy years ago. Uh which which state the minimal is one on one, one to one. Uh and it's even posted on our website, the policy for anyone to see. Do you do so? So I want to know why we we pick the minimum and not something that is above the minimum to mitigate this. And even your own report stay refers to minimum. I'm not making this up.
I I think the the to to answer to your question, which is not the not the reasons. The policy, not the policy reasons why we picked one to one, but we can't require a developer to do anything beyond what's in our. Hidden standards. And if our written standards say. Minimum one to one, every developer is going to insist on one to one and they're not going to have discretion. To go beyond what's in those written standards. If we want one to one, we that has to be the standard.
Okay, I'm looking at you, city attorney. Our act land preservation policy as posted on our city webpage. States a minimum of one to one, minimum.
And and there was a time, not that long ago, when we were able to um. Control the growth of our residential development by requiring applicants to go be up above and beyond what the minimum requirements are. And we were to compete for the allocations. Um and when that policy was written back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Applicants got points based on on things like preservation. We can't do that anymore. So what is the minimum is going to be. The maximum that we can require. The applicant wanted to come in and say um we want to do more because we. Want to. Um there's nothing stopping them, but but because we no longer have already C S, the minimum is now just the amount.
Right. So so what can a coun- council member do? Just send the E I R back, not say no to it, just send it back. Just send the ER back, not say no to it, just send it back and say, look at this again?
I don't think it's not it. I there's a discrepancy between it has the accountability act and SP three thirty, SP three thirty. Says that we can't deny a project, what you'd have to do is say. To manage a project based on in the IR. Um and. What SP three thirty says is you can't deny a project unless you can make findings based on written. Specific safety requirements that is unsafe. That's not what the ER is saying in this case. Sequo gives councils discretion to make findings. On whether or not the benefit of the project outweighs the environmental um. Impacts. Absence of SP three thirty, you could say there are sequel. Impacts, but we don't think are are um the public benefit outweighs. Therefore, we want to admit further mitigations or we want to deny the project based on the sequel impacts. But then you're. In violation of SP three thirty. Well, that's the dilemma that we're in um. It's we deny the project based on the sequel findings and based on the inability to issue a statement of overriding considerations. I think it's very likely. I think it's ninety nine point nine 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 percent sure that we would be sued. By not just the developer, but by um the organizations that have sent us letters telling us that if we deny the project, they're going to sue us. Um as well as by the state. Um so I think um. It's it's an unfortunate dilemma, certainly, and sympathetic. I wish the legislature would clarify um. But just just tell us that secret doesn't matter. Um because that's really what SP three thirty is telling us.
Right, but my intention is not. I'm not here to deny this. I'm I'm here asking to improve the 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 mitigation. The medications proposed.
I think the problem is if you're asking them to go beyond what's in our written policy, which says one to one, um then we're in violation of SP three thirty.
Okay, that that that's one answer. I'll 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 move on, but then because then it gets even worse with the second one, right? Do you see uh the 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 uh the VMT, right? Uh and and and. I don't know who who came up with the mitigation, but what the heck? Do you do? How is that supposed to mitigate anything? I I where's the data that says you pay to Mogo or you you give out a pass for VTA, but you don't have a bus close by? Uh where's where's the common sense in 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 that mitigation? I I I really need to understand that and I I mean it in a nice way, right? Because I I I'm ask, I feel like I have the gun here. Uh there's letters threatening lawsuits already and and we're trying to to do the best, but this is okay. Say yes. No, I don't want to. Maybe I do want to, but no, what the heck? The the explain that to me. This is where this is this really where we have conflicting laws. On one hand, uh the EIR and secret tell us you you are here to protect the impacts on the environment. And and then we we know we can't mitigate it or the the proposed mitigation measures. Makes sense today's makes sense to you?
Right. So with the VMT, uh I guess with sequel general. Um when you have a significant avoidable impact, you you still have to apply mitigation or feasible mitigation measures, even if it does not bring that um. Mitigation down to a less than significant level. And so for this, for VMT, a lot of uh mitigation measures that can be applied elsewhere and where there's good transit and. More dense cities like San Jose, there are a whole number of mitigation measures that could be selected. But Morgan Hill, a lot of those don't apply to us. Um just how you pointed out. Um but we do have to incorporate some type of mitigation measures that are feasible. And although our transit is limited, there is a. A stop that is nearby. Um so there's possibility of having that one hundred percent subsidy. Or uh with talking with the applicant. We came up with the potential to do a financial contribution to Mogo as an opportunity. Instead of doing the DTA passes, so they were in agreement with that part of it. Um to help to have something that's more feasible or more realistic for this project. There's something that that the residents would use.
Okay, so so right now I think Mogo is only going to be in place for not a couple of years. With the grant we got, right? So so but those mitigation fees. Mogo or the bus passes are supposed to go on for a long time. But what what is that timeline and how much would they pay toward towards Mogo if they were to do that?
So at this point, we don't know. So there that's why we have there will be a TVM, the transportation demand um um management plan. That would determine what that would be. Um but for today, I don't know what that number would be until that plan is developed. Uh when this project, if this project is approved and goes forward. The idea behind that mitigation to fund or provide a financial contribution is to help promote Mogo or. To help Mogo extend its life beyond the grant. And so we're trying to fi- figure out different ways on how to fund Mogo in the future, once the grant goes away within the next two year, two or three years.
This is a similar mitigation that was put on other projects in the area and that we're looking at. Putting on for additional projects should they set that VMT threshold. Um VTA is working hard right now with a group of Santa Clara County um teammates across all cities. Looking at other potential mitigation options, but from Morgan Hill, like Adam said, when you do get to the list. We don't have a lot of options and you know, buy everyone a bike. Isn't really necessarily something that could work either. So you have a lot of different factors that have to be considered. Um during the development of the TDM plan, we will be looking at. Um not only those two options, but if anything new has been developed that we think might even be more efficient. But having an endowment of swords to Mogo that makes it last longer does create an impact. Good impact and putting someone in that vehicle instead of their personal vehicle. And it does reduce VMT per capita for that neighborhood.
Right, I understand that part. The uh uh that I'm going going in a different direction now. Now so so half road. I I don't know if you're familiar with it. Uh that's an interesting road. Uh to say the least, and that concerns me. So if if uh if a lot of those residents, if that project were. To happen would go decide they want to go downtown taking uh half road. That like that would turn into a huge mess in that area, wouldn't it?
Um I don't know. I don't have the numbers or what that would be, but we do have our transportation consultant available. But um there are mitigation where the the applicant or developer would have to pay their fair share towards improvements. Um and then the issue that was brought up with the planning commission was. Who oversees that? So it'll be a um. And it'll be uh teaming up with the county to see when we can get those improvements done. Um so I don't have that answer now either. Uh and when more projects come through, will we get more money and be able to work with the county in order to improve or install those improvements? But that's that's the main issue is that it's outside our city limits. We don't have all that ownership. Within that road, within half road or that intersection with Mission View. Um so that's the other issue there.
Yeah, so so that intersection is an issue. And then, of course, when you go drive on half or towards downtown, you know, that that. Ninety degree corner. Uh with the poor people having to barricade their homes. So that cars don't land in their home. Uh good luck to that one. Um. So 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 as part of that plan that they're talking about, is that something they're going to look at or or? Or or we're to say that's outside city limits. We don't care or what what's the thought here?
Wait, um well, they would have to pay their fair share towards all those intersections and um.
It's not so just the intersection admission half road. It's you know, that ninety degree. Curve. It's not even a curve.
It turns it into content. Yeah.
Yeah.
So um Chris Gianni will come up and talk about coordination with the county. On transportation improvements. We're finding a fun. Thank you.
Well, I think the question on the ninety degree curve, I don't know that that was. Analyzed in the AR as an intersection because it's a ninety degree curve. There's another project next to it where we're working on the frontage on half road, which is near that curb. So I think some of that improvement is gonna. Make that curve a little better, but it's not an intersection. So it's more of a. Traffic safety. We share that with the county and that's obviously something we can we can look at and we have worked out with the other project that's next to it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then yeah, then of of course, the and I think that was mentioned by others too, is really the. The way uh students will go from, you know, that development to live oak school and then. That is a little bit unclear to me as well. What do you say to that?
Well, I think the mitigation um Adam talked about is a signal that intersection, the county intersection, uh half road and uh. Uh Mission View. If you notice, the county already created a four way stop at that intersection, which provides a little more crossing for people to go and cross the road. Obviously, there's no sidewalks there. So with this project, the sidewalk will be built along Mission View, so people can actually walk down that sidewalk to get to. Half road. They're trying to talking about live oak. They're going in the back section. So we have. Uh so we'll have a sidewalk and to start, we'll at least have a stop sign. And then obviously, we've done things with the county in the past to try and. Obviously, get the frontage on half road to. To do something on that long that frontage, maybe not a sidewalk or a pathway where we could better connect. So I think with this development here, it's gonna. It's gonna provide a better con- connection for everyone to get to live oak at that that area. And we'll keep working on that with the county. And I I will say, I think um our team has done a good job of. Us collecting dollars for um those intersections in the county, because the county doesn't necessarily have a process to do that. So by us working with them and at least starting to collect money, it's going to provide funding to improve those intersections that are outside the city. Um what we haven't collected before. So we're we've made good progress from some of our past practice where we just aren't collecting money at all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Borjoli.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um where did you get the data to support that issuing um discounted VTA passes will. Mitigate as stated?
So um. VTA has a. A a model and identifies um. VMT mitigation measures. There's this. How many different options there are, but the providing subsidies towards the or toward VTA. Is one of those um mitigation measures. And so having the it could be a range of. From one percent to a hundred percent. And so obviously, the more percentage or higher. Passes that you provide to all the residents, the more um. Or the the VMT can be reduced. And so that's why with this project, the hundred percent was selected because that's the most that's the only feasible one. And even with that, it's. We uh work with the applicant, came up with the also the financial contributions towards Mogo.
So you're uh not you, but VTA is making the assumption. That we have a good. Train and bus system to the South County. And we we really don't, we don't have an optimum system. We don't have trains that run on a regular basis throughout the day. Uh now we do have the five sixty eight, which goes into San Jose. Um but you would you would have to go. To wherever that bus stop is. And yeah, you could probably use Mogo to do that. But uh you know, I I I don't think VTA really thought this out because out of two hundred and sixty nine residents in that unit. I I could probably tell you on one hand, how many residents would use that? Because again, we just don't have an optimal system. So I think there's a fault in that um VTA analysis. Uh they're not being real realistic. And I think a a better use would be to enhance Mogo. Um even to go into South San Jose. I know that's we're not talking about that, but. Um I mean, that would be an option to go into the uh Deradon Station, maybe. Uh so they can pick that up and and go, you know.
I want to make sure we're as clarifying questions is what we're doing here.
So I I I just um I I think there's a a major fault in in that particular mitigation area. Um and I think we should look at the the Mogo aspect as opposed to the VTA, because I just don't think that VTA is going to really. Pan out to anything. It's just going to be a waste of time in in my opinion. So uh that that's my questions, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Adam. Staff. Um. So I'm, I mean, I too, these are some of the concerns that I have, but I'll start with um. You know, we're looking at. I start with what I what I do love and I was explaining to Josh and I see that you're you're also here. Um. And so I want to tell you, I love that you have spread out the BMRs throughout the throughout the site. I think that's.
It's really important. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so that's not. Probably at this time to talk about what you like and don't like. It's clarified questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Um what I do want to ask is. When I looked at the site plan, I was looking to see if there was any type of way to get through the site without having to cross numerous streets. And it looks like the only way around the site is really the perimeter. Is there something that I'm missing as far as within the site itself? The reason I ask is because all of this traffic. That is there, we've got lots with no improvement. I understand there's not going to be improvement on the other side, so. I certainly wouldn't want my kids, you know, on the outsides of that.
Sure. So I'll bring up the the PowerPoint again. So on here, um as you pointed out, and as uh Chris and I mentioned, there's exterior sidewalks along Mission View and then also half. Uh interior to the site, there will be sidewalks as well as pedestrian pathways. Uh so there's one main pedestrian pathway that goes down this middle of the upset here with and ends on with larger greens on either side. And there's also pedestrian pathways um extending uh east to west ones here. There's another. Larger one over here. And so there's pedestrian pathways throughout the project site. Uh going towards this community center where there's the. The pool clubhouse, the lawn playfield area. Um and then there will also be sidewalks throughout the site as well, interior to the site.
Okay, okay. So at some point you do have to to cross over. Let's say you're going over to. To half. You're in one of those units down at the bottom. You've got to cross over that. That's a road. That's what is that? Like that where you're.
Right here. Yeah. So this will be um. It's a drive aisle. It's also to serve uh the driveways to these houses over here. And this would also be emergency vehicle access going through here.
Okay. Well, I think that's something that I saw as 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 an opportunity. Just you don't have the infrastructure around that site. That provides a walkable community. You're going into an area that has. A lot of need there, so.
Questions, please.
Yes. Um I also wanted to know the linkage to live oak. What is that going to look like?
At this point, I don't know. Um that would be something that'd be worked out with the county. Since the since this property or where the where half road is and this intersection with Mission View is outside the city limits.
The corner of Mission View and Half Road is not in the city limits? I know part of that corner is in the city limits.
There's a small part of it. I'm not sure how much um.
So the part that is in the city city limits, will that be improved? Because I'm very interested in all of those kids being able to get to live oak. And that crazy hairy. Node. What are we going to do to make sure that? It'll be okay.
For the the that we have control over and that the applicant is providing is the sidewalks. For the the that we have control over and that the applicant is providing is the sidewalks along here, along half and Mission View. So there will be a sidewalk there.
What about crossing that street?
That will be outside the city limits.
That'd be outside the city limits on either side. Can we not work with the high school or school district to see how we can make our kids safe there?
I don't know that they answered that.
Okay, maybe that could be a question for the applicant. Okay, then I wanted to know. The VMT bus passes. Is there, I'm hoping we can look at this with a regional approach. This area is having has quite a bit of development that's happened recently. Are we able to? Sounds like, you know, this was a suggestion from VTA. Are we able to flush out that suggestion? For example, maybe the bus passes are not just used at this site alone, but they're used throughout our affordable housing. Developments all throughout the city. Surrounding area, maybe, you know, that's something I'm interested to know. Can we do that? Because then I think we could have some impact with those.
It would have to be a nexus. And so requiring this project provide bus passes to affordable housing elsewhere in the city. That I don't see how we could do that because it would have to be a nexus between the project and the mitigation measure.
Project, frankly, takes us over the expected traffic that's supposed to be or very close to where we're supposed to be in the general plan. So. Again, thinking. Regionally within our small sphere. Also. If we invest in Mogo, similar to some of my colleagues have said, what happens when that sun sets, when that grant is gone, then what?
Well, this uh, this is to provide a financial contribution towards some city initiated. Transportation. So it's right now we have Mogo, that we have something else in the future that financial contribution be used for whatever that other program is. So Mogo is an example. It's not. Specifically just to Mogo.
Okay, are we able to do bike storage? Though I haven't heard anything about bike storage or electric vehicle charging. Is that something that we're able to do so that tenants, especially with the townhomes, are able to store bikes and actually use bikes? Maybe that's for the applicant as well. I'm happy to defer that if you like. Okay, uh, I also wanted to know with our VMT mitigation, it really falls short here. I'd like to see, could we have Hesagon, who was just hired to do our transportation planning folks have a look. At that transportation management plan?
I would have to defer the question even Jennifer about the CDM plan.
So the when the TDM plan is developed, it will be looked at by numerous staff. It's signed off at a staff level, but we would not have an issue having a period of view.
Awesome. Thank you. That's awesome. When you say pay their fair share, can you define what exactly you mean by that? Is it proportional? Is it what is it?
It's it's proportional, usually a percentage. So they would have to pay based on. The cost of to do improvements to an intersection, whatever is their portion of it.
They determine their portion.
That might be a question for Chris.
So typically, I I will wait until Chris gets up here, but typically, the improvement will be installed. And a reimbursement agreement will be set. And as people pay into that, the original builder of whatever transportation facility that is gets reimbursed. Or if we know that the payments are coming in at the same time, it can be coordinated. Where we don't have to wait very long to put in that improvement, but if they're all happening at the same time. So it really depends on the development we see in the area. And how things are moving forward. So the first one who triggers the need is the one who initiates it, and then they get reimbursed. Thank you. Okay. Just to reference your previous question, there are conditions for bicycle parking. In the ordinance or in the resolution. So it is included. So like storage, and I'm talking storage, not racks.
I need to know time. I'm not seeing a clock here. Is your time up? Okay, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Just want to make sure we're tracking time. I can't see the time here, so.
It's long-term bicycle parking standards are included, including security requirements and storage.
Okay, awesome. And then what? When we do the one-to-one, I also have an issue with that, you know, one, why aren't we doing that and preserving the acreage here in Morgan Hill? Two, why aren't we doing the same amount? Three, can we not get orchard, you know, invest in some orchards to preserve so we don't become like San Jose? And if we.
Time is up. Let them answer those questions.
You could, yeah, if you could answer that, that would be great.
Yeah, so that's similar to this previous question where our code says to provide a minimum of one-to-one. I know. And previous cities that I've worked at, where if something's being protected, farmlands being protected elsewhere. For this example, this one sixteen acres. Let's say they're putting a conservation easement on a farm that's twenty acres large. They sometimes would do it for the whole twenty acres, not just sixteen acres. And so the minimum of one-to-one. Although they just have the sixteen, it's potential that they could do more depending on who they're conserving, doing agricultural conservation on. And who how they work that out, or if they're paying a fee. And if we want to make any changes, it will be a tax amendment to our zoning ordinance to figure out what. Could be done, but through the CIR process, it was. Stated in there that even with sequel case law, that no matter how much. Ag land you're protecting, you're still losing some portion of agricultural land. And so preserving it somewhere else does not. Mitigate the impact. And that's why in this project and as. We've seen in other projects where it's a significant avoidable impact. So that's why that happens. And then. Your last question on about the location, it's. And in the city, it's we're very limited on where farmland is or whether we can protect farmland. And so it's. Pretty standard throughout the state to provide or protect farmland outside of city limits or along city along the boundaries. And so there's no regulation or nothing that we have, and I'm not familiar with. Of any other cities that require it within their city limits. It's I know lots of times it's preferred, but. There's limitations on how much you can protect within the city limits.
And and I was here for that discussion. And this was because this was in twenty seventeen. Planning Commission and the council updated their policy prior to that time, ag mitigation could be made anywhere in the state. And the council and the commission and the council updated that policy. To clarify with the mitigation occurring in Santa Clara County, there are no places to mitigate agriculture within. The city limits of Morgan Hill. There was a strategy to try to focus those mitigations. Within the. Well, within our sphere of influence, but the county was not supportive of our. Our plan. So it's been modified to allow mitigation anywhere in Santa Clara County. But it isn't the same plan we had before, which was anywhere in the state. For example, the. Good project, the Bello Farm project is being mitigated in. In the Central Valley, because that's what the policy a lot of the time, and we modified that to a player within the county. I will. Before we move on, remind you, it's after nine o'clock, so.
Yes, so we need to now decide, should we extend the meeting? As I believe we're going to probably go past ten o'clock. So with that.
Move to extend to.
And thirty? Yes, feel good about that? I'll second that. Got a second? All in favor? I want to post. Okay, so that passes. We're gonna go to ten thirty.
I want to ask when you.
No, 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 sorry.
I do want to respond, I don't accept the answer that's been given to me because I would like to see, even if it's less than sixteen acre.
Not going there. Thank you for your information. Any other questions, county members? We're not, you're done. Your time is up.
And I actually would like my question answered. The question is, we do that in Morgan Hill? I would like an answer to know if we could preserve land in Morgan Hill. It doesn't have to be sixteen acres. Can we preserve it in Morgan Hill?
Please, we'll move on to the next council member. Any other question?
I would like to have my question answered. If you don't want, if you're not willing to entertain it now, that's fine, but at some point.
Don't over that question enough. We're gonna move on. Any other questions? I have some questions for you, sir. The prime farmland. With sixteen acres, was it was it being farmed?
I I don't recall when the last time was farmed. I believe the applicant has that answered. It has been a number of years.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my other questions as well. And so not like, was it was it likely to be farmed again anytime soon?
That question as well about the planning commission meeting, and there was no due to the size.
Okay. How long does the applicant? Whether it's Mogo or VTA, how long, how long do they have to keep purchasing? Passes? You may have asked that council member. I don't know if I heard the answer, though.
Sure, if they're providing the VTA passes, it's in perpetuity. And if it's a financial contribution, that can be decided if it's a one-time contribution or if it's an annual contribution, that would be something like that with the city.
Okay, very good. And then with regards to VMT, is that a county or is that state mandated?
It's state. It's the state recommendation is to reduce VMT by fifteen percent.
Okay, and so. It seemed to me, I I I'm assuming that I've got a question here. Are we always going to be facing this on on most of our projects here in Morgan Hill?
For now, we're reviewing on a case-by-case basis. So yes, but in the near future, we are bringing a VNT policy to the planning commission and then your council to deviate from that fifteen percent. And come with our own VNT policy throughout the city.
Very good. Okay, we are going to open public comment and we are going to go to the applicant and I believe it's Dick Oliver who will be going first and then one of. I think one of your employees is here also. Okay, so. We can go to to Dick Oliver first. And at this point, again, just want to make sure you have ten minutes here for your presentation. See that? Mike, you are muted?
And frozen.
And frozen. Can you hear me now? Yeah, he might have turned off the video.
Well, he has some other something else on that's reverberating. It's not the video. Dick, if you have some other audio on like a speaker, it's reverberating back. You should be able to turn on your camera, but you can also just start speaking if you'd like, and I can tell you if we can hear you. Move that. Dick, are you able to hear me?
Let me, in the meantime, have the other gentleman come on up, make your presentation. We can come back to Dick if he if we're able to get him on.
Yeah, it may be easier to just have big call in. I don't, I think he was calling in as well. If he's not there, then I can just do it on my.
He can call into the Zoom. Information is on the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Josh Brotus. I was hoping Dick was going to give an introduction because Dick's been working in the city of Morgan Hill since nineteen ninety-two. And he was excited to give. You know, a history of what dividend has done in this area of town directly across the street is where I actually started my career twenty years ago selling homes at Mission Ranch. But in addition to Mission Ranch, which was three hundred and twenty-eight homes. We built Cittobia Estates, Alcante. We redeveloped the radio tower location there and did in. It's a lot of pride in developing that part of town, and we're very excited to be developing this thirty acres on the former five property. I want to thank staff for their efforts to date. We've been working on the application since two thousand and nineteen. And as staff noted, our project is being processed via SB three thirty. We can tie with all applicable provisions of the zoning and municipal code. What excites me about the project is it has three different product types. In total, we have two hundred and sixty-nine homes, fifty-six of which will be detached courtyards, which will front Mission View Drive. Next to Mission Ranch at Taramia, now it's called sixty-four duets and a hundred and forty-nine townhome style condominiums, which will provide a buffer between. A property and tramway and Taramia. Providing three distinct housing types in the development, a wide range of buyers would be able to live and enjoy the Crossman's community over the coming years. In addition, our project. Will provide forty BMRs spread throughout all by product types throughout the project. The family-oriented development will provide a clubhouse, a pool area, a dog park, children's play areas, as well as barbecues, picnic areas for the future homeowners to enjoy. I did want to touch on the traffic improvements that Crossman will be providing at for their share contribution on. There's five of them in trouble. Adam covered them, but I think it's important to note that we will be doing our share to help mitigate traffic in the area. The project includes sidewalks along Mission View Drive and Half Road. We recognize that safety for the families and the students in the area is of the utmost importance. We don't have the ability to put the sidewalk on the other side of Mission View Ranch. Dick Oliver and dividend. The sidewalk as far as we could in front of Taramia and the frontage of Mission View Drive, but the Mariani family has not been open to allowing us to put a sidewalk along their frontage on the other side of Mission View. There was a given plans about the project over three phases. First one will be composed of ninety-foot homes. All three product types. Phase two will be a hundred and eleven homes and phase three will be the final sixty-four townhomes. We appreciate everyone's efforts today and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we are with this, we are going back to. Council questions. And these will be limited questions. I want you actually to work them through me. And Dawn will be making sure that we're not, what we don't want to do is open up. Of a company on that. So we're going to, we're going to be careful with that. Are there any questions? That's my little Martinez Beltran.
Thank you very much for that. I really appreciate it. I I would like to understand if we are able, realize it's sixteen acres. I realize it says a minimum of one-to-one. I'm not, I'm interested in preserving that land in Morgan Hill, even if it's not sixteen acres. Are we able to do that similar to like what you see in Saratoga, a small little orchard, what we see off Depot? Are we able to do that? Is the applicant able to do that?
Not for this project because it's not in our objective standards as written.
Okay, whether or not they volunteered.
If they want to give some part of the city for agricultural uses, that that's up to them, but we can't require it.
Okay.
Very good.
Anyone else? Any other questions? If not, we'll open up the public comment. Any speakers? Joe Berenowski, very good.
Good evening again, Joe Berenowski, Morgan Hill resident. I just have two quick questions. I think it was back in January. The city. Presented a a gra- a update on the our eight-year cycle regional housing needs allocation. In twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. And. At that time. Early had just started. And in the pipeline projects. We are ready at a surplus of three hundred and eighty above moderate income homes. With the total surplus. Early into the year cycle, seven eighty-two. And so my one question is, are the two hundred and sixty-nine homes being discussed today? Were they part of that three hundred, were they part of that allocation in the pipeline? My second question is. So this project. Has been much discussed. Has significant.
Joe, Joe, please, Joe, quick. Stop the clock there so he has his time. I'm sorry, I'm okay with, I'm okay with the question and even having an answer to that question. Can we answer the question and then have you come back to question number two? So they're not. Oh, she feel good with that?
I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah. And who would be the one to answer that first question?
So this project is included in the pipeline of projects that we have in the housing element. And that pipeline represents the. A portion of the one thousand thirty-seven Rena that were required, the regional housing needs allocation that were required to produce.
Got it, okay. You're able to hear that? Okay, Joe?
Thank you.
Very good.
As much discussed, there are is an unavoidable and significant impacts. And so. The city has chosen to do a statement of overriding concern. And the rationale, which is required to be in writing, is that. And the rationale, which is required, uh, need to be in writing, is that, um, the significant unavoidable impacts of the project. Um, the city finds the project benefits of providing housing, including BMR units. Outweighs those unavoidable concerns. And so my question is, um, I, I, I mean, we all know that there's property tax involved, but. The city has consistently, uh, said that. The impact of residential development of any kind has a net. Negative revenue. Impact on the city. And so my question is, what are? The. Quote, benefits of providing housing. What are those benefits? Is it just that we're being good neighbors and, um, allowing more, uh, well-off individuals come and buy market rate housing? And if that's the benefit that's being referred to, is there a limit to it? Or is it unopen, is it open-ended? That's my other question. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Take a shot at that, Don?
I'll, I'll, I'll take a shot and, and maybe Miss Carmen can just. It's a good, I mean, it, it's a good question. Um, the answer is. Um, is that the state has declared. A housing emergency and the concern is that if we, um, deny a project in violation of SB three thirty. I mean, SB three thirty is, is. When we say of that, the benefits of providing housing, what we're really saying is the benefits of complying with SB three thirty. Not paying those penalties that we would get for violating SB three thirty. Overwrites the, the, uh, unavoidable impacts.
Yeah.
In cities that have denied housing projects because of the impacts, um, have seen. Um, judgments as high as thirteen million dollars and.
Wow, okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments?
No, but, um, the applicant does have an opportunity to come back up if there's anything they'd like to rebut or, um, finalize with.
He's good to stay seated. All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, we will open it for, uh, we have, we'll close public comment. We will now have council discussion. So. Any comments or discussions that the council wants to engage in? Council member Lebers?
Sure, I'll jump in. Uh, I'm very familiar with this intersection. It's close to my home and I use those streets all the time. Um. As far as I can recall, probably back to nine, nineteen ninety, at least, it has not been usable farmland. In any way, it was used to storage by flies for large trees and those have all been moved. So. I, I wouldn't really say we're losing egg. I mean, of course, there is a. Possibility that somebody might want to go farm something there, but I, I really doubted. So I think instead of having just a vacant. Lot full of weeds, we're better off to. Move forward with this project. I am very familiar with, um, the developer, his company and the end product that he puts forward. I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic for going to Live Oak there. I can tell you there's limited parking for Live Oak back there. So. The kids that are driving are gonna go around front and they'll park in there. And then the few that probably do walk there, if we take care of that intersection with a four-way stop or a signal, I think we're going to be good. There is really no access, access to the school grounds without walking past the football fields. Or there's no gate to get through the football field. So you have to go back to where they play, uh, baseball back over in there or through the, um, where the farmland for the school is. So I don't see that that's going to be huge people walking to Live Oak from there. I could be wrong, but that's my opinion. I had four kids go through Live Oak and drove all those roads every day. So. Um, I think the fact that Dividend Homes has. Agreed to all the stipulations that we put forward with them was amazing. And I admire their company for hanging in there and meeting our demands. Of course, the demands are good for our city. But I, I'm not really sure they're ever going to make any money. It's everything they have to do to even get this project started. And the other thing that I think is really important for us to remember is they're building in three phases. So you're not going to have like one day, there's going to be those three thousand people commuting to work. It's not, it's going to be over a phase. Couple of years and our city is going to grow whether we like it or not. And. Why not go with a dependable developer who puts out a good product? And will listen to our concerns like Live Oak students and white blacks and all these other things. And build what we need instead of leaving a patch of weeds there. For someone that could come in and build something a lot less quality.
Very good. Thank, any other council members? Any comments? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank everybody for being here. I'm sorry we didn't get to hear from Dick. I was looking forward to hearing what you had to say. Um, I, I think that. You know, this is, this is a really hard area. I do think I would like to have that availability to see if there was, no, it hasn't been farmed. Recently, but we've got lots of changes that are happening with urban farming. And I would love to see that opportunity, but I also recognize that Dividend has done a great job. I mean, they. And I can't go into some of the things that I like. That's fine. I would tell you that.
Remember, this, this is the time to do that.
Okay, so. I would say that they had come to council prior, um, they were hoping to do BMRs in a, in a different fashion. We asked that they disperse them. Throughout the site, they did. I think that is something that has made Morgan Hill very successful in our housing. Um, and it's something in plan that you always strive to do. So I thank them for doing that. We'd heard quite frankly, I mean, it started on the planning commission and I know when he was on the planning commission as well, um. Asking about yards was something we were doing during the RDCS and to see that they're continuing to, to offer that. Not just for the single family, but also for the duets. I'm waiting for it to come on the courtyards for those townhomes, Dick, but, um, I love, I love that you're still committed to that because we don't see that all the time with builders. And so, you know, and that's one thing I can say about dividend is they're coming in and they have reacted and, and done and been proactive when we've asked them to do it. It's not an easy site. This is one of our challenging areas with traffic congestion. That is just the reality. They've taken a lot of development over in that area. And so I think it would be important, I'm, I'm going to ask that we do look at how we. Look at the transportation management plan, that we're realistic with that. You know, maybe it is a regional approach. I'll, I'll encourage you to look at something like that and, and, you know, we can use those passes somewhere else if you're. Not using them there. I'm glad to hear about the bike storage. I do think, I, I think that we need to work on that crossway to Live Oak. It's not just kids driving, it's kids walking, walking to school and going through exactly where Maryland's saying is, you know, where the baseball fields are. How about when they have their football games? All those people are going to walk to the football game. So we've got to think about that. That road is really dangerous. And those are the things that I think are, are very important to look at. And then so. The traffic and then the other really big thing, which I'll, hopefully we can come back and look at it in a policy. Let's, let's think forward. Let's think about how we're planning Morgan Hill in the open space. Let's preserve. The land in Morgan Hill, even if it's not sixteen acres, whatever we can get, let's do it now. Because pretty soon we're going to be paved over, just like all of our neighbors to the north. We have an opportunity to do things differently here. And that's what you should be asking us to do for you.
Okay, very good.
We'll vote, I will make the motion to approve, um. And I'll be in favor of it.
Jordan, make your comments. You're good? Councilmember Spring?
If someone is going to second them, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve. Not yet.
Okay, what are we?
Uh, we're going to approve all of them at the same time, two and three. Actually, one, two and three, I'm sorry.
Gino.
I know, I know, I was like, what?
That was good, that was good. I'm sorry. Um.
Uh, first, I'd like to ditto what, uh, council member Weaver has so eloquently stated. Uh, it, it was, it's perfect. And then I'll second the motion.
The motion by council member Martinez Beltran, second by council member Borrioli. Comment?
Uh, yes, so, so, uh, council member Lebers, no, no, I have always a different stand when it comes to act land, uh, even an empty field of grass, uh, has its purpose. And, and as to, to the improvement and the biodiversity, uh, in any community. And, and, and part of, of that location is prime act land, whether it's been used as such or not lately, doesn't matter in this context. Uh, we have a policy in place, uh, to replace. Land that we lose, uh, in our area, if durable or, or have builders to pay into a fund that we then can, can do that. Uh, you might remember the discussion, the Southeast Quarkland was always the target to preserve land. There is land in that area that can be preserved. Act land that is actively being used, as many of us know. And then just across the street, there's still, uh, 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 act land being used, right? With the orchids there, so, uh, it's not that far off. Uh, you know, I, I, I'm very familiar with the builder, the local, I, I myself live in a dividend homes that. Uh, the, the, my comments are not related to this builder. I know that they do, uh, very nice projects and familiar with. The needs of the community. So I didn't ask a lot of questions for the builder because I, I, I know what they're doing and how they're doing it. Uh, but, uh, I am concerned, uh, that, uh, about the traffic and we'll really have to look at that, that, how that's going to go, the flow. Uh, along Mission Drive with everything else that's coming, but definitely also along the half road and content. Uh, that corner, that, that concerns me. That's a dangerous corner, that ninety-degree, uh, corner there. Uh, and I'm worried about that. I'm also worried about the kids going to Live Oak School. Uh, we need to make sure that they will be as safe as possible for, for same reason that traffic might impact them. The, the, my frustration is primarily with regards to the process, right? We have processes that we are to follow, but. Can't really say no. If, if I say, say no, oh, here's a lawsuit. Uh, uh, and we already have threats of lawsuits, uh. Uh, gee, give us time to even discuss the project before you threaten us with lawsuits. I, I, I hate it so badly. And, and, and we have to, to, to sign off for mitigating measures, mitigation measures that really are not mitigation measures. As we all know, I called them out tonight. I don't think, uh, the true mitigation measures, we just had to put something in there. So that we can kind of follow the law somewhat. Uh, and that's my frustration is we sign off. With our vote tonight on, on something. That we can't really stand behind. I mean, those are not really truly mitigation measures that help. They don't do anything. Uh, and, and that's my frustration. I can't change that process right now. I can raise my frustration. Uh, and I do that and, 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 and. Um, so I'll vote for it too because I feel like I have to and. Uh, I think the project itself will be a nice one and I'm sure Mr. Oliver and Joshua and team will do their best to listen to. Concerns we'll bring in along the way. Uh, but I, I, I wish we would, we would have a little bit more leeway to. To really come up with good, strong mitigation measures.
Okay, with that, I'd like to say to Dividend, thank you for the good work you do and the investment in Morgan Hill. We appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? That passes five-zero. Item number sixteen, introduce ordinance and any section, land use regulations. Let's see what we're talking about here for. I want to read that whole sentence or that whole paragraph, but Christina.
Item number sixteen, we have Matt Mayhood coming up, economic development director. Tag team with Adam Puskowski.
Very good evening, Abascal, the municipal planner with the climate division again. So the item before you tonight is a Zim and Tex Amendment for the administrative office zone and district. So the. Puzzle is to amend section eighteen twenty-four oh-two, which is the land use regulations. Chapter eighteen twenty-four, which is our commercial zone districts of our zoning code. Just to allow vehicle related uses and other compatible uses on a minimum of one acre lots. So as shown on this slide, this shows all the, uh, changes that are being proposed. So this is within the CO, the administrative office zone district. So as, as you'll see on here, we have restaurants, both fast food and sit-down tasting rooms. Uh, general retail. Vehicle rentals, vehicle repair with maintenance. Uh, vehicle sales and leasing, all as proposed as a permitted uses. And then for conditional uses, we have a convenience markets. Fuel and service stations and vehicle washing. And then for all these uses, uh, once again, it's to be allowed only on a lot that's size one acre or greater within the CO zone and district. So here's a map showing all their, all of our land within the city that's currently zone CO administrative office. So you have the one or. A couple of parcels over here near the Trammell, uh, Cochrane site. We have a pocket down here, uh, not single parcel. Uh, down here by Dunn. And then on Tenant Avenue. So as part of the twenty thirty-five general plan and the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive zoning code update. It was envisioned to remove the administrative office zone and district. And those, they, all those properties that were zoned administrative office with the commercial land use. So therefore, the certified Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five environmental impact report for twenty thirty-five general plan. And the addendum to the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five environmental impact report for our two thousand and eighteen comprehensive zoning code update. Um, were analyzed and evaluated all those parcels that were zoned administrative office. To have their land use designation changed to commercial and a corresponding general commercial or neighborhood commercial zone and district. As such, all the uses proposed by the administrative office zone text amendment were evaluated and proposed as part of a. Uh, a final EIR for the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan. As well as our zoning code update. Oliver, as part of the going through the public hearing process, uh, for the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive zoning code update. The planning commission recommended and then ultimately the city council adopted to retain that administrative office, the CO zone district. Which included all those properties that I showed on the previous slide. Um, and the reason was to, uh, there was a, a few reasons. One was the, because there were some existing businesses that were on site. Uh, where they didn't want to have their zone and district change. And then there was also planning question, city council feelings that, um, we could have office buildings on some of those sites. And then for our sequel analysis, um, the city acted as the lead agency and we have completed an environmental analysis and determined that there are no significant. Environmental impacts or previously identified. Uh, significant impacts made more severe by this project modification. Simply, we're just. Implementing what was proposed back then, uh, just doing it in a different way. Instead of doing a zone change, just changing the text amendment to allow certain uses on. Uh, a, on parcels that are larger than one acre. So there's no new circumstances or any new information associated with this project. And therefore we determined that a then to the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan update. Final EIR is the appropriate secret document to address the project modification in accordance with the sequel guidelines. And now I'll turn it over to Matt. So that's in the presentation.
Thank you, Adam. And so Adam kind of told you the, what we're doing. And now I'm going to tell you the why. Um, so city councils two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three strategic priorities include two things that are important on this slide. That are an emphasis for the economic development team and their physical sustainability. And they're around economic development. These are your priorities. So within that priority of physical responsibility and economic development, this, the economic development team has a very. Focused strategic plan. It's the blueprint and we've been working on this blueprint for five years and we continue to stay focused. Uh, on these five, uh, industries and specifically in this, uh, on this project, we're focused on retail. And in our two thousand and twenty-three retail goals, here are the five goals that we presented to you during our strategic planning session. And the two that I'd like to talk about tonight are a focus on auto dealers and we already talked earlier tonight about hotels. And the last one is the importance of developing commercial lands. So as it relates to retail sales tax, I think it's really important for the city council to understand that. When you look at, um, sales tax, it accounts for twenty-five percent of our general fund. And that the auto transportation and fuel category alone accounts for thirty-five percent of all sales tax collected. And then twenty-two percent are autos and transportation. So that's automobiles and RVs, motorcycles and such. I think it's also important to know that there's real impact from some of these, uh, uses. So just to give you an example. You know, uh, uh, You know, uh uh and we talked about this earlier in tonight's earlier presentation, the hotel. Uh can generate enough T O T tax to support one point five police officers. A, you know, good, successful auto dealer can provide enough sales tax. To support two point five police officers on an annual basis and a Costco many more. So. Sales taxes, critical uh flow of funds into our general fund that allows for the city. To pay for public safety and critical support services. Part of our strategic plan as it relates to auto dealers, we have been promoting. Six preferred auto dealer sites in the city of Morgan Hill. And the reason this is important is because we've been promoting these sites for many years. But there's a little bit of a disconnect between our zoning that we have, the the property is actually zoned and the property is in the general plan. And we wouldn't necessarily realize this until we went through an exercise. Instead of looking at where is this disconnect and where could we actually go build auto dealers like right now today? So. Um when we started looking at. These sites, we realized that there were some sites that immediately today their auto would not be allowed. And those were indicated by the N in that far right column. And then we really had um two sites that would be allowed now. That's Condit and Diana, those sites are all acquired at this point. And then at Tenant and Juan Hernandez, but we have other plans for that site up on that Tenant and Juan Hernandez, other priorities of that site. And then we noticed that Cochran Highway one O one, those twenty nine acres there, that there was partial. So there's a partial. Split of those twenty nine acres where there's commercial highway to the north. And commercial office to the south, and we'll get into that a little bit more. The last thing or one of the last things I want to talk about is barriers to development. Um as our priorities, we're looking at auto dealers. And trying to bring additional retail to the city of Morgan Hill and additional commercial industrial projects. There's things that we can and can't control in economic development. And our barriers to development, our goal in economic development is always trying to figure out how do we bring down those barriers to make it easier for people to invest in our community. And there are certain things we can't control. We can't control the current economic conditions. We can't control if there's a recession. We can't control inflation. We can't control interest rates. We can control things like zoning code inconsistencies. We can help with the sequel process. We can, you know, help with our consultants and looking at timelines, but we. Can't necessarily control the control the outcome. You can't control construction costs or labor and materials. Um impact fees, they're expensive, we know that. Perhaps we can provide incentives. In some cases, we can. In some cases, we can't. There's competition in the regional market. We can't control what San Jose is doing or what Gilroy is doing. We can't control what we're doing in the market. And there's other issues, land entitlement, planning and permitting processes, our F A R requirements. D M T versus L S, which we'll have a conversation about, I'm sure in the future. Kind of railroad split zoning and then outdated P U Ds. So the list, the list can be endless. But these are items that are important to note because at some point we will be talking to about these issues. But tonight, we're here trying to fix the zoning code inconsistency in the general plan as aligns to our strategic plan. Our best practices as it relates to the development of commercial land is very similar to our strategies that we've in place. With our industrial land, use them, it's use them or lose them. Best strategy to protect commercial industrial land is to develop them. The second strategy is create flexibility for potential users. Creates strict strict requirements on the use of land. To limit the capability of of a developer to do what they need or what they want to do to actually make a project a project successful. Reduce the barriers to entry for development and business. Try to figure out how do you make it easier for businesses to come to Morgan Hill? And the last thing is incentivize those preferred uses. Right? We're trying to figure out how do we do that? How do we freeze impact fees? How do we? Uh incentivize other uses through sales tax sharing agreements and such. It relates to the Cochran and Highway one uh property, um the twenty nine acres that's currently owned by Tramal Crowe. Uh this is a parcel, it's over one acre. Um this property, these twenty nine acres, and it's about twenty seven acres of the developable, developable land. There's a about a two acre piece that's a retention pond. But the northern portion of this land is own commercial highway. Southern portion is zoned administrative office or C O. And it's very limiting as to what you can do there. You can do. Uh a corporate campus, you can do professional office, you can do medical office. Um but you can't do any type of retail. Yeah, and you can't do, it's it's limiting as to what you can do there. Um we wanted to create flexibility within that entire zoning district. We want to make the property more attractive to a potential investor and a developer. And we want to reduce the barriers for any future development and provide some certainty, allowing those uses so there's flexibility. So that's what we're trying to do with the zoning code text amendment. My goal is to open and close the hearing, lay first and second reading of the ordinance, then introduce the ordinance. Um so I'm sure you have questions. Um happy to answer questions between Adam and myself and Jennifer on the technical side. And those two, um how we move forward. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Uh council member Borjoli. Again, this came in mind, please, these are, these are questions.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. But thank you for that presentation. Um the dealerships on, Matt, you may want to stay up here. The dealerships on Condit Avenue, the Ford and the Jeep Chrysler. Um have, have you heard of any problems with traffic and or? On-street parking, especially given the residential community right across the street?
Um I've never had any complaints in our office as it relates to traffic in in and around those projects. Um I don't believe there's on-street parking is allowed on Condit in that area. Um and we constantly.
Matt, I'm sorry, my timer is still going. Thank you, Matt.
Be frequently and talk with both the um writers of those businesses and we've never had. Any complaints from them about traffic or issues or or flow of traffic through Condit.
Between both of those uh dealerships, it's about twenty acres roughly.
I'm gonna say Jennifer's gonna probably look it up really quick or jump in, but I think um the Ford store is eight and a half.
They're both about nine.
About that's about nine, which they're both fairly good size.
About twenty acres. So um um. Uh the revenue you you stated on on a previous slide uh from a auto dealership. Could give us two and a half uh police officers uh to our city and given uh the growth of our city. Um you know, reaching, you know, a thousand, you know, or more every year. You know, for every thousand, we need one point two five, you know, offices. So um so we. We we need, we need money to support that growth. So we can in place uh police, fire, EMS, et cetera. So if you compare a uh an auto dealership to an office building. Which one would be the better revenue driver?
For the highest sales tax, I'm gonna answer your question in different ways. So the highest sales, the highest revenue producing businesses. Uh per acre are hotels. Because they don't.
Sorry, I was right.
Are hotels.
Hotels.
The second are auto dealers. And then an auto dealer in California of reasonable size and success generates about sixty nine million dollars in revenue annually. That equates to in the state of California, about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars of local sales tax generation. Per city, per municipality, municipality.
Thank you. My permissive use on a C O, in a C O to eliminate C O. Um as uh and that's what you're suggesting. Am I correct in my analogy?
We're not eliminating any uses within the C O. Administrative office district, we're only adding additional uses.
More flexibility.
Their flexibility.
Okay, so that's interesting because a lot of the comments on next story is, you know, we're eliminating our capabilities in the C O market. Um uh so uh getting back to the dealership analogy, I stated. The the proposed auto deal dealership on Highway uh one O one in Cochrane there. Uh if that comes in, would that um impact? Would the traffic impact that area? I mean, the analogy that I gave you for twenty acres. I mean, what? Would you say there would be any more than on on Condit? Any more traffic than Condit?
Um I am not a traffic analyst expert and I'm, um I don't know if we can compare the two sites. Um. I I think one thing I want to point out is that when you look at. I I should have made this distinction clearly. When you look at this map. And the northern portion of the commercial highway, that's thirteen acres. The southern half, which is commercial office, is seventeen acres. So. Um you know, they're not, they're not equally split. There's more property to the south. Um and I think as we look at. Of projects come as as a project could come forward, I think there's uses along Cochran. That are similar to what are across the street, as retail and restaurant and maybe a gas station or a hotel. Would make sense in some of that area. Um but what we're trying to do is create flexibility so you have, you can bring forward a project that. It's continuity within the space and works for a developer in the future.
So the to C H on the north, let's just say if you have retail in there. But on the south, to have an auto dealership, again, I'm focusing on on traffic impact. Would 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 it impact it tremendously uh that area?
Uh we don't think it would impact traffic. Any more than. Professional office, uh a a a business uh park. Or a medical office facility of equal or comparable size.
Uh and I appreciate your analogy, but I think uh an office building would have more impact in traffic than a normal dealership. Would you say that's correct?
Oh, leave it to the planners to answer that question.
On on a trip uh trip generation, what meaning that like if you're looking at a thousand square feet. Of of the trip generation for office is higher than that of an auto dealer.
Okay, thank you. So again, I want to make sure, uh because again, on on social media. Uh you know, we're saying something different. This permissive use does not eliminate C O designation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is not an attempt to reclassify this as highway commercial. We're not extending that zoning over, we're not changing the color. It's adding uses to the existing zone.
Okay. Uh thank you, Mayor. I have no more questions.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Lebers.
Thank you. Um when you, can you put that map up again where there's two pink squares or whatever they are? Okay, so are we only talking about the light pink area?
Yes.
Okay, that's just I wanted to know.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, it's not pink. I know that. The bright pink. Okay, so um you talked about the um. Auto dealerships on Condit, okay? You know, there's also an auto dealership backed by Trader Joe's. And that's a little, you know, kind of a little windy road there. Uh uh do you see any traffic, you know, stoppage there or, you know, accidents there that are caused by that kind of? Dealership that's in the back? I think it's a Chevy. I'm I'm not even sure what's back there.
It's victory Honda.
Oh, it's a Honda, okay.
It's an eight acre site.
Okay.
Um and.
Are you aware of anything?
We see very little traffic in that area.
I know, uh so that's kind of interesting for me. Um and. Okay, I do have other question too. One of the things that would change is the ability to have uh auto repair. Is that only auto repair connected to a dealership?
Yes.
Okay, so we couldn't have the muffler guy there?
No.
Okay.
And that was a very clear distinction that the planning commission made. Because they only wanted auto repair associated with uh new car sales.
Okay, that makes sense. So, okay, that's that's my questions. You answered them. I do want to tell my colleague though that if you see it on Facebook, it's got to be real.
Okay, uh council member Spring. Yeah, he is. So so. Let let me ask ask frankly, in in those two purple amateur areas. I I I I are you thinking of as some someone specifically wanting to do something with regards to dealership on both?
So.
Areas.
We, the Tramal Crowe has had a developer express interest in the property. Um we have communicated directly with that developer. Um they want flexibility across twenty nine acres, recognizing that, recognizing that twenty seven acres. Or that there's two acres that aren't developable. And they want flexibility to uh provide. Uh development opportunities that include commercial highway on the north. And then the C O on the south that now include auto uses and the and the uses that we're adding. Um through this text amendment.
He, so if my understanding is correct, on on the the commercial highway one. Highway portion, they could do add a dealership if they wanted to, correct?
Yes, they could.
The the um is is it is it correct to say that that basically any dealership also so? Big chunk of the business is the maintenance and repair and all that as well.
Is part of the part of, yes, when they sell you a car, they want you to come back and service it at the dealership, absolutely.
I don't know about my colleagues, but with both of our cars, one is from Ford, the other one is from Honda in Morgan Hill. Uh there's quite some traffic uh when you go to the service department, uh especially in in the morning and afternoon hours. Uh because that's kind of when you, when you go bring your car and then pick it up. Uh but but the commercial highway district does not allow vehicle repair. So so how does that tie together?
The commercial highway allows new auto sales and auto repair in that in that zoning district.
So it only says vehicle sales and leasing. It doesn't mention repairing.
It's an ancillary use as part of the new sales, new vehicle sales.
Have to explicitly mention vehicle repair, maintenance for for the C O district if we don't.
Because there could be a need if, depending on the the project that comes in. Where they may have a separate building or a separate parcel with the repair you separately, sort of like a regional repair. But then you have the sales on a different lot. So we wouldn't force it. Right now, if you come in and you want. In the highway commercial, you have to integrate it all into the same site. But there may be an occasion where you want a separate parcel with that use on it only that's connected directly back to your new car sales.
But but where does it say say that vehicle sales and leasing includes repair maintenance?
I'll find that.
Uh that I'm pretty specific with my question. I'd like to have that answered. Is that there's an inconsistency between uh uh it's commercial highway and the C O. Uh regards to repair, my maintenance.
So in our definition of vehicle sales and leasing, it's it says the retail sales or rental of new or used vehicles. Includes the sale of vehicle parts and vehicle repair, provided that these activities are incidental to the sale of vehicles.
Okay. The the frankly, it goes to towards uh electric car vehicles, right? I think we all agree, the but but the bad news for those dealerships is. Uh there might, there's higher demand for those vehicles, but there's less demands for service because they simply don't need that much service. Because they they last longer, right? There's less uh automation and stuff in place. Uh why, really curious, why do we think that that? Promoting dealership is still the future to go. Uh, well, clearly there's a trend that that many, many people now nowadays buy cars online. And then through digital car sites, they they bring you the car once you bought it. If you don't like it, they take it again. There's no need for a dealership anymore. And even the standard dealership still more with the digital part as well. Why do we think it is a good strategy to consider even adding more dealerships?
So, um, the developer who we have spoken to has talked about this in the terms of the future of mobility. And I think they have a fairly clear understanding of their industry and what's happening in their industry. Um, and have said that as they look at Morgan Hill and um, the opportunities here that they're looking to the future and they want to provide the type of automotive and mobility experience of the future. So I think they're they're looking forward. They understand, I think, what's happening in the marketplace. And I think they would like to see Morgan Hill a player in the marketplace in the future of mobility. And I'm not trying to be clay with that answer or cute. I'm using their words. And and I think they would not be looking to make an investment and create a create a development project. They'll purchase the land from Tramal Crowe if they didn't see a business opportunity.
Okay, he, he, um, one of our residents who sits there in the background sent an email and I really love his thought process. Instead of just not going forward or fighting over it, could you match and may maybe coming up with a with an idea, proposal, language that would incorporate those two areas? I think they're owned by the same owner right now and say, hey, if you own this, you can build a dealership, but it cannot be bigger than if you just put it in one of those two lots. As long as this your two lots are adjacent to each other, so that then the the overall amount of dealership would not extend to two, three dealership, which still still only be one, but maybe across the two uh, zones. What do you think about that idea?
Don, have you got?
I I I think it's an interesting idea. I feel the way that that would have to be accomplished is through um, if that's what the council wanted to do and we had a willing property owner is through a planned development or just a development agreement, um, which is a negotiated zoning. And the only issue with that is that that is a, um, you have to have a willing partner who wants to invest the time and resources into negotiating a um, a zoning DA or PD. Um, and at this point, we, you know, that's not, that's, that's, that's a Mr. May had talked about the various entry and that's, that's a particularly good entry.
Right, but it's 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 an option, right?
Yeah, it would be if if the council's not comfortable moving forward with the zoning amendment, that's an option.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt. I I wanted to ask, you know, why not? Why not do a PD?
It's the property tramal. I think Don answered uh, that question. Um, Tramal Crowe hasn't asked for a PD and the person who's expressed an interest in the property has not expressed the PD. We're we're trying to bring uh, the the interested developer to the table to have a negotiation with Tramal Crowe to see if they can't move forward and hopefully the city. Uh, we can be a part of that conversation and see if we can bring a project forward for the planning commission and for staff and the planning commission, the city council will consider. But right now, there's no project.
And and why not bring a project the decision makers, the council members here could look at and and we could look at and understand. It's really hard to not understand what we're working with, what we're looking looking at other than hearing about auto dealers.
You are right. We are trying to create flexibility within the existing twenty nine acres. Um, so we can bring a project forward. We don't know what that project looks like today. Um, based on the current zoning, I don't think the 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 potential applicant, if you know what that project looks like. They're very interested in twenty nine acres and trying to put together a project within those that acreage and um, we're trying to get them to the table.
I mean, I think that's part of the frustration, right, is trying to make a decision on something that we don't even really know or is tangible. Um, is there some other way to allow car dealerships where maybe you can't put a certain number? You you can put two, maybe three, that's it. Can we limit the number of dealerships?
That would be part of a PD that Don previously spoke about.
It would have to be through a PD?
And there there would be there would be ways to 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 do that, that are creating constraints within the, within the zoning text amendment. Um, I think any, you know, I think what our economic development team would say is that this would be so limiting that it would make, it would essentially um, eliminate um, what we would be trying to accomplish by creating flexibility because it would have to be we we do this for other uses where we don't want a concentration of those uses. I'm not sure that the same, um, the same criteria applies when you're coming talking about auto dealers that um, there's a synergy um, between them. So you wouldn't want to say no auto dealers within a half a mile of each other. That's counterproductive. But that's the way in which we would typically do something like that. I'm not sure there's an easy way to do it with that applies to auto dealers, especially on a constrained site that's twenty nine acres.
Okay, uh, I mean, we couldn't say you can do this many or we we can't do it because it's not.
I think that I think the issue we have is that um, the site could be divided up. It's right now, it's one owner that owns, I think, it's some parcels. Um, those parcels can be merged. They could be split. Um, we could do lots of things and then we're in. So we're putting limits on potentially different owners. And it's really, it it's really hard to say that on a twenty nine acre piece of land, what we're doing in the zoning is like, we're going to allow this zoning. Not one of those within the zoning. Um, that's difficult to do. I I'm not, I'm not but if that's what the council goes, um, we could, we could think about that, but I I I'm not sure that it's something that we could do. I'm not sure we could do that on this site, to be honest. I I I thought about it until you asked the question.
Okay, um, what about looking at, why not focus on the the DePaul Center that's there? We know that there will be investment in there. We know that for a fact because the county has already said that they're investing money in that, they're retrofitting that. Why not instead, um, you know, look to change the zoning to encourage more medical supported facilities there?
Within the administrative office, medical office isn't allowed use. There has been no medical office use expressed there. Um, Tramal Crowe has not fueled any, fueled any interest or offers around medical office in that space. And the city has a strategy that we're focused uh, on medical office right now at Juan Hernandez and Tenet um, around the Rosewood project, and you'll be hearing about that in the future. And we continue to market and promote that area um, and that area on our medical. And as we mentioned earlier today, as part of our industrial, um, uh, industrial preservation optimization policy earlier uh, a year ago, we opened up medical office in industrial, light industrial areas as well. So those areas were medical and go. Um, there just has been no interest expressed in that area.
Have we looked? Ha- has the city, um, looked to recruit medical interest there? I mean, our strate- strategy wasn't to develop out at Juan Hernandez. We've got, we've got money that we know is going into DePaul. So it seems like it makes good sense to embellish that area and encourage that area.
So DePaul Medical and the investment is happening at the county level. We have no control over that investment. So twenty five million dollar investment. We don't know if the county will keep investing in that space or not. Just, you know, we have no idea. Um, and again,
I think they've made it pretty clear that investing, but okay.
As I said, there's, there's been no medical office expressed in this space since I've been here.
Okay, reiterate, it is an allowed use. So what's being proposed tonight doesn't change that. It is allowable. And auto dealerships are also in allowed use there, correct?
Not in administrative office.
Right, but they're in allowed use in this area. You can have two auto dealerships there. What we're doing is we're encouraging more auto dealerships to come. And my question is, why don't we put that energy into encouraging medical space that complements that area of development and where we know a county with twenty five million dollars to invest is going to invest?
The medical office is allowable in that space. We've been talking with various users of medical facilities. No one has expressed interest in that space. They've been looking elsewhere.
Okay, um, I guess we're seeing start to shake out for me is I've heard a lot about our strategic priorities and what we've put forward. But our strategic priority is looking at the economic development and we've put money in visit Morgan Hill. I guess my question is, how much money have we invested in visit Morgan Hill? The T bid, the downtown P bid, recreation and wineries at our outdoor sports center and making Morgan Hill a tourist destination?
Off the top of my head, I I don't know those numbers.
Okay, but let me get, the reason I'm asking that is we just had signs talking about our gateway to Morgan Hill, right, Nate? So I really, this seems very similar to a distribution type conversation. How does this advance the strategy of tourism, recreation, wineries, when we've got, you know, Morgan Hill Mile of autos at our gateway? That is where I think I'm concerned when I'm looking at it. If you want to build two auto dealers, it's there. I get it. I understand the fiscal part of it, but that's my question. You know, we've got to steer steer where we really want to go. And if we really want to go there, where are we going, I guess, is my question?
I don't necessarily um, see how this negatively impacts the tourism strategy at all. This land in this area is not, has never been designated for um, this destination um, development, other than potentially a hotel on the commercial highway portion um, and some retail on the commercial highway portion um, and an administrative office, a professional office, or a medical office, or a tech campus wouldn't do anything to drive tourism either. So um, I'm not sure how we're making that connection.
I'm not trying to be facetious, but when I think about Napa, when I think about Sonoma, when I think about Paso Robles, when I think about Chelsberg, I am not thinking about an auto move, an auto mall. My Morgan Hill Mile of Cars, I'm not thinking about that. And so to me, I feel like we're putting the wrong signal out, guided our gateway. If it goes on Tenet, great, but right when you come into Morgan Hill, it should be, I think, a different announcement. And I think that's the strategy. If we've got our wine, how, what are our wineries think? What are our hotels think? Because I'm hearing they're, they're wondering is this what, you know, other tourist recreation areas are also? Do they have auto malls at their gateway?
I've driven through Napa quite frequently on my way to the Severado Trail, and you actually do drive through an auto row um, on the east side of Napa, not Highway twenty nine, but the other side to Severado Trail.
Which is a backside, but, okay.
Well, some would say it's the best, you know, some of the best wineries, but.
This will, um, this will only essentially impact this parcel. Correct?
Uh, mainly this parcel, yes, but it doesn't prohibit anybody in the future from assembling other CO properties to aggregate over an acre. But most of these properties are already developed.
And um, we can't get somebody to to do this on the the two sites that are already two acres that are already there that are zoned for auto. That's just not.
The the property at Condit and Diana is already spoken for. Um, you have the Ford store, you have the Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealer. Uh, they also own the parcel next to it as they complete their construction. And then the property on the north side there, um, Diana was recently purchased by Family RV.
I'm sorry, I meant on the Tramal Coast uh, site, what they do allow auto dealers, they just don't allow that whole piece to be auto dealerships.
I'm sorry, I misunderstand the question.
So I guess we can't find somebody who's willing to work with. We already have a zoning amendment there and we can't find somebody who's willing to put auto dealerships with what we have.
Just real quickly, that will be your last question?
Yes, thank you.
No, we have not had anybody else express interest just in the commercial highway portion to do an auto dealer there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've got a couple of questions for you, Matt. I I think it gone along with what uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran is talking about as far as the uh, gateway. I've talked to a number of other residents. Some of them expressing concerns about what that could look like from the freeway. Is there if we were going this direction, we would, we would be able to do things from a, from a design perspective to make sure that we didn't see cars lined along the freeway there? What would, what might that look like?
The interesting part about um, this property is, um, you know, the northern piece, um, which is the commercial highway actually sits up higher than the freeway. And you don't necessarily have really good freeway visibility to much of the parcel because the freeway drops down below. Um, so you would have, you just wouldn't see if, like, a row of auto dealers there. Um, the other piece is through design review, we could be looking at how, you know, it looks from a frontage standpoint and have certain requirements put on the developer to meet standards that we want to see achieved.
Okay, because sometimes you go to these dealerships and they have these vehicles up on, you know, some sort of elevated uh, platform.
Yeah.
And that's not what I want to see along our freeway either.
You know, you don't see happening in Morgan Hill and you don't allow electric signs and billboards and things of that nature. So we do have standards and I think we would anybody coming into do a development here to the highest standards that fit Morgan Hill's look and feel.
Another concern, thank you for that too. Uh, some of the other concerns are things like uh, lights, light pollution. How how is that addressed? How could that be addressed if that became an issue?
The city has performance standards in regards to lighting. Um, also, it would be evaluated during SEQA, as would noise and every other part of SEQA analysis that's required. Um, it's also likely that if it is a major development, they may need things from the city that would be addressed through some sort of an agreement or a development agreement, depending on what it may be, and that would also give more power to the council to require.
Okay, all right. So we, I mean, we could I've not been on a lot of car lots lately, but some of the concerns, right, are, you know, the the loudspeakers. I don't know if they even use those anymore, but could we make sure that there were not, I mean, but I mean, we can make sure that that was not going to be allowable? Okay, okay. Exactly, that's my, yeah, yeah.
And that was one thing that we looked at when comparing what we have now and the residence impacts and whether we've been getting complaints and we just have not.
Okay, it it came, it it was certainly a conversation I had and want to make sure to address this to make sure that if that resident is here or listening, they would they would know that that's been addressed. The, um, let's see here. Actually, and I like the, if people are buying cars online, certainly would be less traffic if we had them there. I mean, right, that's, that would be even better. Uh, and again, with regard to auto repair, so there could be no independent auto repair shop there if it's not connected to a dealership. Okay. It does allow for, I mean, there's, I think restaurants, there could be possibility for, is there retail as well, other types of retail that are on, that sort of thing? Okay. So the questions I have, we will now go to, if no other questions here, we'll go to, we'll open public comment.
Mayor, we have um, two for six speakers and we have twelve minutes left in the meeting. We might want a motion to extend because we'll also have discussion after that. We can also go into public comment and deal with the motion after if you prefer.
I think we better deal with it now. So uh, do I have, I need to go to eleven? Eleven thirty, okay.
Want to extend this to eleven thirty?
I think we need to make sure we I think we need to make sure we have enough time. I don't think we're going to wrap this up in thirty minutes.
Okay, and plus we have closed session.
That is correct.
So, uh you know, my advice is, you know, uh the call-ins, just, just allow, you have the flexibility, one minute to call in.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I want to make sure we, I do not want to get ourselves in a position where we're not wrapping up by eleven. I don't think we want to, there's not a lot of people here, so I think we need to give them their time. I don't know, how many people do we have online?
One, five of the speakers are here.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do full three minutes for those who want to speak. And so.
To approve, uh move to extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
I'll second it. Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, imposed. Okay, passes four to one.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try to wrap up before that, but yeah.
Yes, and if speakers, if you could line up, our first speaker is David Went. If you could please make your way to the podium and. Um he will be followed by Nick Gage. As David is coming up, we have a request from Miguel Jimenez. His wife, Susie, is on the line. We've confirmed that. He's asking that she be allowed to cede one minute of her time to him.
I will give her, yes, we'll do that one minute. Yep, so that gentleman will get four minutes.
He's not the next speaker, he's coming up later.
Got it, okay, very good.
Council, staff, or my fellow citizens. My name is David Went. I'm a longtime citizen in the southeast portion of Morgan. This is directed to my council member, mainly representatives down there. My conversation with, uh in my area, represented by these councilmen. I can, I know one that is in favor.
I can find no one that's in favor of this text amendment. I noticed that the city has also indicated in their hesitation. That this is a minor amendment. This is not a minor amendment. These few words are only to the benefit of one. Controversial company, Trammell Crowe, so that it will enhance the value. Of this property, so that they can transfer it to this unknown. Unknown, we don't know who this guy is or company is. It enhances Trammell Crowe. This is a premature attempt by the city. To allow Trammell Crowe to gather more, it's coffers. Trammell Crowe is a very controversial. Company in this area. And this proposal does not talk about the developer. It's gonna maybe. Some dealerships into this acreage. We don't know how many dealerships. I don't know what's gonna happen to this. Who is this developer? Let the developer come forward. Let the, the new developer that wants to buy this from Trammell Crowe. Without this really nice little minor amendment. But it only benefits Trammell Crowe. It doesn't have anything to do with this developer, this mystery eye in the sky developer. We're talking about things that are premature here. Do you understand that? No one in your community that you represent is in favor of this minor amendment because it's premature. It shouldn't be here, it shouldn't be tonight, and it shouldn't be this mystery developer that we're talking about. I hear everybody talking about, oh gee, is it gonna be medical offices? It's not gonna be medical offices because these people here are pushing medical offices down on Tennant Avenue. They're not pushing medical offices next to the hospital. We don't have anything that these people have done other than tried to push this as a dealership.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Development. And I think that we are premature in our efforts here tonight. And I, for one, strongly oppose these words.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick Gage, followed by Ryan Warren.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff and Community. I'm Nick Gage here. I'm speaking to you tonight in my role as CEO and President of the Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. I'm fully recognizing that all zoning ordinance amendments in front of the planning commission and the city council. Many factors that must be first assessed, evaluated for fit, and then socialized with community. Ultimately, these decisions must be made on behalf of protecting the character and the values of the city of Morgan Hill. Successful execution of the city's economic and fiscal responsibilities. Sustainable and measurable standards of performance on incoming development agreements. Other which, honestly, we find by community discussion and input. As such, I'd like to start my comments tonight by first recognizing the efforts conducted by the city staff. The planning commission and the residents of Morgan Hill community who offer their insights, their concerns, and recommendations on the subject. To your Congress, this is supportive of the planning commission and staff recommendations that's outlined tonight. As well as the city of Morgan Hill's auto gear of economic strategy. In addition to the ordinance amendments, which is the first step in zoning realignment. I recommend the following three considerations being incorporated in all future auto mall development agreements. As a way to level set today's proposed ordinance decision. First one is strict restrictions on the number of auto dealerships on any given parcel. Number two, convictions on customer test drives, including any traffic in residential zone neighborhoods. Number three, on premise employee and customer parking, prohibiting access to residential zone neighborhoods. Our intention with these recommendations is to offer a go-forward approach, supporting the planning commission and staff ordinance recommendations. Offering a few roadmaps of key conditions of a given development strategy. While ensuring a community-centric strategy, respective of the needs of the residents who reside in close proximity. Of a given parcel under review and development. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. Ryan Warren, followed by Joe Baranowski.
I'll be quick, I promise. Uh so, good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Attorney, uh City Manager in our community. My name is Ryan Warren and I'm here on behalf of the Morgan Hill Police Officers Association Board of Directors and our members. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the proposed zoning text amendment to the Administrative Office Zoning District. To allow vehicle-related uses. Being a police officer in Morgan Hill is more demanding than ever. We're required to wear lots of different hats and engage our community members in a variety of different ways in order to meet their needs. To be an effective police department, we need to attract and retain the best possible talent available uh in a very competitive environment. We also need the best available equipment, tools and resources. I and the members that I represent, uh believe we're doing a great job for this community and will continue doing um. Uh a great uh job in this uh in the future. Uh but these things require a consistent funding and financial support from the city. As the city continues to grow, the police department will obviously grow as well. To provide the same quality services as well as continually improving our quality of service, we will need additional staffing and resources. But we recognize that the city is limited in its financial capacity, especially as you look at the general fund forecast in the future. To that end, the Morgan Hill Police Officers Association is this reported with ways in which the city can grow its uh six sources of revenue. Particularly in the area of sales tax and transient occupancy tax as those revenues go directly into the general fund. The Morgan Hill Police Officers Association is supportive of the proposed zoning text amendment. As it allows the city an opportunity to potentially grow its future, uh its future sales tax revenue by attracting new auto dealers to the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Joe Baranowski.
Who will be followed by Miguel Jimenez.
Followed by Miguel Jimenez.
In order to approve this ordinance. You have to find that it's consistent with the general plan. And those words are obviously nothing but. Their play to some council members here tonight. What does a general plan consistency mean? And why is it connected to? And why is it important? It's connected to things like the capital improvement plan, which assumes that the development is consistent. Less, what was done in the study in the twenty thirty five general plan. And you also have to find that, that the zoning code that will result is, will protect the public health, safety, welfare. And when you don't have adequate infrastructure. To support the growth, you cannot make that finding. The general plan is not based on an arbitrary set of uses at each property. This is not hard to understand. No, the general plan was not reflective of some maximum allowed uses. There were specific uses that were studied. And this is not a mystery. Comparing two projects that have far greater intensity. Than what was ever included in the general plan. And then saying, well, one of those uses that has much greater intensity. Not just the type of land use, but the size. And then compares, comparing two things that were never ever considered in the general plan and saying, well, see, one of them is better than the other. Shows you how little. Respect that you have to, to, to meet the, the obligation to find. That you're protecting the public health and safety. Maybe protecting the welfare, but you're certainly not protecting the health and safety. These proposals, combined with the other projects that have already been proved in that area. Growing massive amounts of additional traffic that was never included in the general plan. And is therefore not included in the suit budget. Why is no infrastructure there that, that can support what is being proposed? If you want to talk about social media. This city council's got nothing on that, other than reflecting on what's really the reality of what was in the general plan. You might as well just have people drive around and say, oh, I drove by there. Did you see something go around that curve? Not good. It's okay. Let's not, let's not downgrade social media.
Thank you, Joe. Miguel Jimenez, followed by our last speaker, Asit Panawala. Rounding City Council, uh city staff and members of the public. Uh first, I'd like to apologize. I did send you some slides earlier today, but I did miss the noon cutoff. I was humbling, humbly requesting that I could show my slides during my few minutes if possible.
I don't think we have them prepared for you, so I'm sorry.
Okay, understand. All right, I'll be, I'll try to be as illustrative as I can with my words then.
Yeah, just to that note, they will still get them.
Okay, great, thank you. Would it be possible to just show the one slide city staff had? And one oh one, the one Matt was showing, of Cochrane and one oh one that had the two parcels. Now, okay. So my name is Miguel Jimenez. I'm a resident here in Morgan Hill. I'm speaking this evening, um one to oppose the text amendment. Um and to propose a potential alternative. So this text amendment, for all practical purposes, only impacts. With a land at Cochrane Road and one oh one owned by Trammell Crowe. Um but as noted earlier, the commercial highway land, they can build dealerships on it. This text amendment is about allowing more auto dealerships. If this text amendment is approved. I think, yeah, so the, the southern land, the administrative office does not currently allow auto dealerships. If this text amendment is approved, all twenty nine or twenty seven usable acres of the land you see there. Can be, or can be a giant auto mall. So essentially, if you're approving this text message, you're saying, I'm okay. With all of this land becoming one giant auto mall. No protection would remain to preserve the administrative office land for uses the community and city leaders desire. As codified by the general plan with the administrative office or CO designation, designation, such as medical offices. Now, medical offices would still be allowed, as had been noted during this meeting. But if a developer can make a larger profit building auto dealerships, that's what they will do if allowed. Rather than a city-initiated zoning text amendment that benefits one landowner. I think a more transparent approach would be for the unnamed developer to come forward with a proposal and share it with the community. Now, there's, there's been discussion about a need for flexibility. Flexibility could mean utilizing the land closest to one oh one for auto dealerships. While observing the land closest to the DePaul Health Center and Westmont Senior Living Facility for office-related uses. The current CO definition. A proportion of land currently designated as commercial highway and administrative office in these parcels can be maintained. Was noted um earlier, there's the DePaul Health Center that has a twenty five million dollar uh improvement taking place. Approved by the county. I'm gonna go ahead and, and read to you, I have time. Uh what a, a modification to this text amendment could mean that would give flexibility to a potential developer. Still protect the administrative office land. So I would propose that um the statement to allow vehicle-related uses and other compatible uses on one acre lots is stricken. Such that the text would read, the city of Morgan Hill, implementing minor amendments to the administrative office, CO zoning district. And commercial highway CH zoning district, such that the allowed uses under the CH and CO zoning design. Designations may be interspersed on adjacent minimum one acre. Lots, as long as the total land use between the adjacent lot remains proportional. Between the existing commercial highway CH net lot area and administrative office CO net lot area. This would give the developer flexibility to um intersperse the allowed uses among those twenty nine acres. As they see fit, but make sure that we preserve what was codified in the general plan. To designate at least the proportion of land for administrative office for things like medical offices. So an option that I think deserves consideration, I don't like the idea of writing a mystery developer. Have the option to build twenty seven acres. And there's no guarantee that Trammell Crowe would sell to this mystery developer. If this text amendment passes, the land Trammell Crowe owns will become more valuable and they can sell it to whoever they want. It doesn't have to be this developer. It could be Del Grande Dealer Auto Group and they could develop the whole thing for an auto dealership, which I don't think. The community desires. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Asit Panawala.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Let's go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to start with the New York Times article about the South County and wine tasting. I start with that because it shows how the city can succeed to promote tourism. It was an unusual article highlighting the South County when there are so many other places to go wine tasting in California. Why do I bring that up? I bring that up because my family moved to Morgan Hill nineteen eighty and began uh with a motel. And my mom still owns Comfort Inn and Suites today and lives in town. And hotels rely in heart, large part on tourism. So much so that the hotels bound, bound, have bounded themselves together. To fund a tourism district called Visit Morgan Hill with a one and a half percent assessment fee from our guests. So that Visit Morgan Hill Board spends four hundred thousand dollars each year promoting Morgan Hill. Auto dealerships, on the other hand, rely on visibility. That's why they want to be built off the highway. And, you know, there was a lot of talk today about, well, you could, maybe they wouldn't be seen from the highway. You could restrict them in some way, but once you permit an auto dealership to be a use. I think it becomes very hard to put the genie back in the bottle. And you're gonna have lines of cars. And when someone drives through Morgan Hill, as many people do, their image of Morgan Hill becomes what they see off the highway. On one side, the, the view of El Toro has been blocked by a very large warehouse. And that's unfortunate. Now, potentially on the other side, we could have a number of dealerships over this twenty seven acres. No restriction whatsoever. This would all undermine tourism. Now hotels, if you look at the TOT numbers. Although they've rebounded from the pandemic years, they're still well below the pre-pandemic year of twenty nineteen. And this would, this text amendment would undermine our ability to attract tourists. People are not interested in, or thinking about wine tasting or Watsonville Road or Sports Complex if they're driving through a city. Where they see auto malls. The idea of where you go to buy your car is not the same idea of a place that you have where you want to go visit. Or spend on time on the weekend relaxing with your family. And so I'm asking you. And so I'm asking you as city council members to vote no on this tax amendment. CO is already consistent with the general plan. This is the land use that we have decided as a city. There's not a reason to make an exception here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? More speakers. We will close the public comment, bring it back for council discussion. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've I've thought about this a lot and I understand. And I'm quite. Front perplexed and concerned about as well. And you know, I don't envy being in economic development seat. But and I know that we need to bring bring some funds in. I'm not convinced that this is the way to do it, to give a carte blanche for auto dealerships. I think that it I don't see where the strategy became. I know we we were certainly told there's hotels. I know we've had auto dealers, the strategy to change the zoning amendment so that we can have. You know, twenty nine acres of auto dealerships. I just don't see where that where. Any of us, you know, agreed to that. I think there definitely needs to be guardrails. I think that if we do have somebody who's interested, they need to come forward. And discuss the project openly with the community. There's lots of concerns here, you know. Where they're going to be, how they're going to be. Initiating this, what type of dealers they're going to be, are they? Will they change over time and become obsolete? It's a it's a great point. It's a great point. A lot. I mean, people are not going in and haggling as much anymore. And auto dealerships, it's just not happening. I know that we've had success with the ones that we have. I feel like we have. Quite a bit of dealerships already. There's areas that are that are zoned for them, so that makes sense. I certainly think that we're open to them, but. We're talking about a significant amount of acreage for auto dealerships and I just am not convinced that that's the look for Morgan Hill. That that is what I want to hang my hat on when, you know, that that's where we want Morgan Hill to go. We've a lot of money and a lot of time in trying to carve out and follow and chase this tourism because we are different. We're different from San Jose. There's a buffer when you come over that hill. There's a buffer going the other way. We again have the opportunity to do things differently here. The question in my mind is, will we? Will we do something different here? And so, you know, yes, if they want to come and do the auto dealers that dealerships that are here, we'll work with them. We'll do that. We'll we'll see, you know, how can we help them, but. To come and carve out twenty nine acres, the gateway of our city. I don't know if that is the right message to send to our wineries, to our hotels, to the recreation. That makes me very uncomfortable. So. I can't approve that. I'm going to ask that we leave the zoning amendment as it is until we. Have more development. Maybe they come forward and present something to the community again. You know, this isn't the first review. We had quite a bit. This this place was packed the last time that we talked to Trammell Crow and I think this is an opportunity also for them. To turn things around. So that's where I'm at and that'll be my motion is that we leave the zoning amendment as this.
Any other comments? That's member Springer. That's my more jelly, please. Please go first.
There was a motion, so we need to.
Okay, second before move on. Is there a second? I will second that. Second by Renee Spring. Comments?
And I want to councilmember spring. Yeah, he'll comment as well.
Councilmember Borjoli. And we're in comments now. Motion, second, comments.
You want to know what the motion is or?
How many?
Do you understand?
Are you are you not understanding?
Yeah, the motion the motion is to to deny that recommendation.
We have it on. This is this is comments now, right? So I I'd like to also read. Something that we all received from constituent. And and it's and she says, and I'm taking up my time. I am sure you're receiving many letters against rezoning for auto dealers. While growth and development is not something I fully support, I understand it's needed. I support auto dealerships and the expansion of DePaul and medical offices. And she goes on to talk about her eighty four year old mother. Our area needs more health and and science, especially with the growing population. In terms of auto dealers supporting, I I I support the rezoning for two auto dealers instead of more housing or warehouses. Auto dealerships are clean, well lit at night, bring far less traffic. And cars to the area than housing does. Just the city earns tax revenues from the sales. Also, as a resident who bought a car from Ford, I like supporting my local dealer. While providing tax revenue. Lastly, it brings in jobs from mechanics. To support staff, to salespeople. Our salesperson at Morgan Hill Ford lives in Solid Ed. What a great way Morgan Hill can support workers from Santa Clara. In support of of this, I only ask that you just don't cut deals with businesses. So with the permissive use, we're not cutting a deal. It's very specific. And I I don't understand some of the comments. But this is still going to cause massive traffic. When I outlined an example, so did my colleague outline an example. And and where does this massive traffic and and pollution coming from? I mean, I have no idea. I'm I'm really confused about that. So I I don't Matt, maybe you can speak again to, you know, why we need revenue. As opposed to office buildings.
We do that. We're going to be opening up for the comment and all that again.
This is not quasi judicial. It's. So we're so, you know, I'd just be mindful of time.
Okay, so while I let you respond that, we're going to try to keep it brief.
Yeah, I. I think I understand the question is why auto dealers over office complexes? Is that the question?
That's the question and consider what I said, what the the lady said in that supplement, you know, that they're cleaner. You know, it's it's brighter and it brings in jobs.
It is true that they are significant sales tax generators. I think we're all pretty clear on that. Office buildings themselves will generate some property tax, but they do not generate sales tax. They do not generate T O T tax. They're not significant contributors to the general fund. Auto dealers, they employ both unskilled labor and some skilled labor. Depending on the level and the mechanics of a car. So and they they. Provide professional jobs for salespeople. So they do provide an interesting mix of employees. So they provide employment, they provide revenue. Whereas office complexes and buildings, depending on who the user is, they don't generate some property tax. They may generate some use tax. They may generate some sales tax depending on what type of business they're in, but highly unlikely. And we generate no sales tax for medical office.
So depressive use is not prohibiting any other like medical. From coming in on this project, right?
No, it would not be prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
That's my number. You can go first.
I just need a bit of clarification. Because I'm very conflicted on this particular item. Is it already zoned for two dealerships somewhere in that area?
The the thirteen acres. The thirteen northern acres of the twenty nine acres. Is owned highway commercial.
Okay.
You could build. An auto dealer there. You could build two other dealers there. You could build ten auto dealers on that site. It's a tiny. So.
Okay, that answered my question. Okay, because. I'm not opposed to an auto dealership coming in. However, I am concerned that if the. The lavender, light pink area is rezoned for that we won't get. A whole bunch of auto dealerships. I'm okay with the the hot pink area. It's already grown. So thank you for clarifying that for me. I wanted to make sure I understood it completely. And I hope that. The person that's interested in buying this property will convince. The mystery auto dealership to come into that smaller area. So thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. You have comment. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I I will not. I will support the motion and not to change anything that we have in place. I was part of the general plan update as planning commissioner and in those years. We deliberately left it that way. There was an idea, you know, to have the poll center on one side. And then other offices, including medical offices on the other side. That was done by intention back then. Were many of us are baby boomers. Not all, but four of us are older and 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 we're our age community. There is a huge need for medical services and offices. Maybe we don't see them yet, but they will come, especially as we're growing. Some of you might remember Hollywood video stores. Remember, not too long ago, we still had them in Morgan Hill, too. The same will happen with car dealerships. In my personal opinion, Carvana is already here. They're a huge disruptor. And 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 others will follow. They don't need those local dealership. Type of locations anymore, but they will definitely lead to to a downsize of existing dealerships. Or or prevent them down the road. And I think that will happen within the next ten years at the latest, in my opinion. There are studies about that. You can read them yourself if you're interested. So I I think it that. While while it's attractive right now to have dealership, I think it's short sighted to just. Go down that road only. And and this is really what we're discussing tonight is primarily about dealership. Let's be honest, not about something else. It's short sighted to go down that road and we probably would regret that in a few years. If there really is that dream, double up the build on company that that. Some of you might know about, then then there is another option to combine those two areas with a PD as we talked about, right? That also would solve the problem that then with with the area and the public and residents being involved. Because a part of a PD discussion is is community involvement. And I like that idea. I think that's. If they wanted to pursue it, they can come to the city and say, hey, how can we do that? So there's still that other option. I I think we should leave it for now as I see what happens. If if we we say no tonight, maybe they'll go to P D air. Maybe they'll do it just in one lot. Or maybe go never come.
Well, for me, my concern is that if we. Yeah, I mean, it's we're going to fill it all with cars or. Are there other options? Is there a possibility of the gentleman who talked earlier about? Could someone come in and and? Do some of this with car dealerships and something else could be could be offices, could be restaurants, could be other things like that. But if we say. We're only going to limit you to this area if you want auto dealers as opposed to letting them, letting them be creative and how they lay that out. I've become more concerned about the limitations we might put on a potential. A potential client. So I would I would I would be wanting to allow them some flexibility there to do that in a way that it creates opportunity for restaurants, retail. Could be auto dealerships, could be a number of different things. And I would have to hope that if we do this and a larger auto dealers coming in, they're coming in with the understanding at that we expect. Specific guidelines and and a way of doing this so that it's attractive. It doesn't take away from the character of our community. And so I I think we've got to give them the flexibility that they need if we're going to if we're going to go down this route. So.
Mayor, I just I want to follow on because I. Because the work is built and asked me a question. Um, sure, earlier and I. I hadn't had time to think about it because it's the first time I heard the question, but I think there is an opportunity if the council moves forward. To to propose design guidelines that would alleviate. Things about twenty nine acres of just auto dealers because and I think. That might be a way to alleviate the concerns I've heard from both. And that's the relievers about we don't want a twenty nine acre.
And I'm glad you brought that up because it's a note I've got here too about including in the motion a direct to direct staff to develop design guidelines for vehicle related uses.
So so we could technically. In the design. Limit the number that come in to that twenty nine acre.
That through through we I think it's hard to say. Two auto dealers or three auto dealers, but I think it's easy to say. How we want that designed so that we don't end up with. Because I think nobody wants to see a sea of parking lots. That's not right. That's not the type of design that. Morgan Hill would be interested in. None of us are interested in that. And so so I think if we were to give staff an opportunity. To to come up with design guidelines, work with the community on developing what those are. I think we would be able to do that in a way that addresses those concerns.
So to follow up on that, so. We would then go ahead and vote for this and how would we assure that the staff would? Then have I I want to use the word restrictions, but.
Guidelines. Yeah, I think that would be the good direction that you would give. And I think the most that the mayor just read. Is the start of what what you'd ask for is give us the direction of to come back, work with the community on developing.
But it would be a motion or anything like that.
It would it could it could be part of the motion when you decide if you if you move forward with adopting. The ordinance tonight, then you could put that as part of the conditions.
What we'd have to do is is make a substitute motion if we wanted to or. Vote on that and then make another motion or do a substitute motion.
That I can do. Okay. My microphone.
Motion.
John, could you phrase a substitute motion for the council member?
I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I did hear the mayor start to say what he was thinking.
And so, okay, so if I were to do a substitute motion, it would be to. We have to. We have to take these one at a time.
So that I think any conditions you want to put on the approval would go in that first item where you're waving the first and second reading. So we wave the first and second reading and direct staff.
Okay, so I would. I still got it. This has to be a substitute motion. So I would make a substitute motion to wait first and second reading of the ordinance amendment. And ask direct staff to develop design guidelines for vehicle related uses.
And to introduce the ordinance amendment.
That's a second. That's a second.
Yes, motion, right? Okay, if you're making is that?
That is that is my substitute motion.
And I'll second that.
We have a second. So we'll we'll vote on that. If that fails, then we go to like councilmember. Okay, councilmember Beltran.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm I'm not able to to support the substitute motion. I had asked that much earlier. We've spent at least over an hour having a conversation on this and I think. That is the case, then we. Leave the text amendment as it is. And when it's not at the end of the meeting in the last minute before we're voting, we have. The person who's in interested in developing this site come back, travels co come back, staff come back. But I don't think at this point. I'm I'm not. I'm not able to support something last minute like this. We're just going to, oh, well, now we'll, you know, everything we can work it out right here and and stuff. I'll do. This to me feels like a very big conversation. This isn't the first rodeo and. I just, I I can't support doing that. I would I would support us not moving forward, leaving the text amendment as it is. Let's have let's have some discussion on everything that's been said. We've heard lots from the community. We've heard lots from staff. We've heard lots from the council members. And then come back and hopefully we will get somebody to come and tell us what it is that they want to do.
Understand. So we have a motion. And there's a second. There's a substitute motion and there's a second.
I do want to say one thing. At the time, though, our city attorney did not have that answer for us. He admitted he did not know it. Now he has come back with actual legal jargon that it is allowed. So that is. Changes my opinion, so.
I don't want to refer to councilmember spring. Yeah, so I I I think someone mentioned is slippery slope. That's another one of these. Once a chain is out of the bottle, I can't put it back in. Those design design guidelines then it will. Would have to be be handled by staff at the courtesy of staff. You wouldn't have a say anymore. They whether you and then if they they are not what you intended.
Come back to us with.
Yeah, that, that could be part of the direction is to have those design guidelines come back.
I would want them to.
And I, I personally think the PD model would give us a much stronger say in, in how that whole area could look like. But then, then just, uh, uh, design guidelines only. The, I just want to be very cautious. This is, this isn't, I, I appreciate the idea, but it's, I don't think it's a good idea.
Understood. We have a motion and a second. And we have a substitute motion and a second. So we're going to vote on the.
And can, can I make a friendly amendment to that substitute motion that it is a PD?
You can make it. You can make that.
Yes, I'm asking if you would accept a friendly amendment that it be a PD.
Will not.
Okay.
So all in favor, regard, this is a substitute motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. That passes three to two. That's the end of that discussion on that item. Yes, now we need to introduce the ordinance. Uh, so you click, would you please read?
We need a motion and a second.
Okay, need a motion and a second on introducing the ordinance amendment. Can I get a motion? I'll take it from council member Borjoli, second from council member Levers.
Lords of the City Council of the City of Morgan Hill, amending section eighteen-two-four-oh-two-oh land use regulations of chapter eighteen-two-four, commercial zoning districts, entitled eighteen zoning of the municipal code of the City of Morgan Hill, implementing minor amendments to the administrative office, zoning district to allow vehicle with dated uses and other compatible uses on minimum one-acre lots.
Mayor Turner? Yes, we don't call. Yes, we don't, oh, yes. Yes. Councilmember Spring, no. Levers.
Yes.
Gioli, yes. In his Beltran.
No.
Motion passes. Very good. Uh, and now for future council-initiated agenda items. Anybody have anything to report? That's member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for us to bring back looking at the ag policy so that we can conserve land in Morgan Hill.
Very good. We'll make note of that. We will look for a paragraph from you to the city manager and that's noted in front. Okay, very good. Uh, with nothing else being said.
We will adjourn back to the continued closed session.
Yes, adjourning to the closed session.